Okay. So, we'll call the meeting to order at?
6:33.
6:33. I was too late. Is it just us?
Day's gonna be late. I don't know about that.
Yeah, day's gonna be a little late. And I don't know if Richard has a basketball game tonight or not. I haven't heard from him. Okay. Agenda amendments. So, I have one. And I doesn't have any, do you know where?
Nothing to be anywhere of.
We need to have a conversation about, or talk about, a policy around fundraising. So, I don't believe that we do have one. Having said that, I didn't go through the policy handbook page by page, but I looked in.
There isn't one.
Yes, there is. It's on the line.
A fundraising policy?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I can't find one.
No, there isn't one.
Okay. So...
It's on our list of, it would be a procedure underneath the fiscal management policy that we have.
Well, that's where I looked.
We don't have one, but that's what it would be. So, it's on the list of ones that we need to work on.
And so, that's something that the SU has to do after the policy handbooks for each of the local school districts when put together, 2013, I think, maybe. So, but I think we need to bring it up here to make sure that that happens. So, we will put that under new business. Anybody else? Okay. Who wants to be the timekeeper?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Since you volunteered.
Okay. Possible topics for future board meeting agendas. Next month, we are going to have an early ed presentation. So, does anybody want to make a suggestion or two about in the future? Or shall we let what happens at March kind of define that? Okay. All right. People present who'd like to talk to us? Welcome. Oh, welcome.
So, I did speak to Connie out in the hall and did have some concerns about the Act 46. Connie feels pretty confident that we are in a good position as far as the information that was turned in late. Hopefully, that is true. We've been working as selectmen on our budget to try to get it down. And so, we've come to see how your budget's doing so that we can hopefully not be scared and hopefully have an idea of how we need to present at town meeting.
I guess we need to take our trips to Fiji off the budget. Okay. We're hoping to do that, if we stay on time. We're hoping to do that at 6:50. Okay? All right. Mr. Hartnett? An introduction, please.
Sure. This is Jordan Masetti. Jordan is our new first grade teacher to complete the remainder of the year. Jordan is from Williamstown, Vermont, a very recent graduate of UVM. Recently completed her student teaching at Edmunds Elementary School at first grade, which was definitely a bonus. Jordan graduated from high school early, college early, and is retiring at the end of this school year.
Not quite.
Anyway. It was a pretty quick but exhaustive hiring process and the references that I spoke with from both Edmunds and UVM suggest that Jordan was just a remarkable student and student teacher. She graduated from UVM with honors. Received no great lesson in A in any of her classes connected with her major. So, we just found a great prospect and someone that we think is gonna be a fantastic teacher.
Okay. And I forgot my etiquette. We'll introduce ourselves.
I'm Noah Gilbert.
School board member.
Hi, I'm Chris Shepherd, school board member.
You know Chris. You know me.
I do.
You know Pat.
I'm Laura McCallister, I'm the business manager.
And we have Tanya Haynes, special ed director.
Anne.
I'm Becca, I'm school board secretary.
So, welcome to Highgate.
Thank you very much.
I have one. So, because you are a recent graduate and you are getting your feet wet now, can you tell us why you wanted to be a teacher and what you find exciting about kids?
Well, I mean, I think the first answer is you have to love children if you wanna be a teacher. And I have loved kids for as long as I can remember. I have two siblings, both younger than me. And the youngest one is in fourth grade, so it's a pretty big age gap. And so, I've always kind of felt a little bit responsible for like the content he learns and stuff going through our childhood. But as I got older, I mean, I've always been really good in school, but as I got older, I really started taking it upon myself to help other people. And I noticed that was something that I really found a lot of joy in. And working with kids is just such an enlightening experience. I mean, you can be so frustrated at them at one minute and then all of a sudden, they say something and your whole day is turned around. So, I think that even though it is stressful and a lot to manage, I've never been so stressed in my life, even finishing college, as I am right now. But it's just something that feels really fulfilling and purposeful and I would not trust anything else if I could.
Are you getting what you need from us to help you?
I definitely am getting what I need. When I started the hiring process, the interview process, Pat had mentioned how wonderful the support team was here and how much support I would be provided. And I feel like I wasn't really ready for how much I really am provided. There is just teachers, other staff, administrators, everyone is just willing to help me. And it is just like great to know that I am not doing this alone. I mean, I never thought I was, but I feel like I'm really provided with what I need. So, I'm really glad.
Great. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask us?
Do you see any new things happening in the future? I mean, what makes this school so special?
Oh, where do we get?
I know, pretty big question.
Well, we'll start with Mr. Roddy, who is also a school board member.
I am. I'm Dave Roddy.
I'm Jordan Masetti, I'm the new first grade teacher.
Oh, hey. Nice meeting you.
You too.
We're in the 21st century and we're learning how to educate kids in the 21st century and look at how kids learn. Well, I don't know that that's new, but they learn differently now and things are different now. And so, how do we make that work in a system that has, you know, what, decades of years of doing it in a different way? And I think that's pretty exciting. I think technology is pretty exciting. With the caveat that we, it's exciting, but we haven't yet defined the rules for it to be used purposely. But anyway, that's what I think. And I think, you know, here, that's exciting things to be doing. Two guys want to say anything?
Jordan, Connie was a career educator over at MBU.
Seventh grade.
Things have changed credit a bit. You know, the challenges for teachers is large now compared to what they used to be. So, anybody who wants to get into teaching, I admire them, so.
I'm glad that I'm fresh out of college, so I have all of that recent information. So, I'm at least not used to the way things used to be.
Well, I hope you enjoy yourself.
Yeah, I'm really enjoying it so far.
Well, that's not to say that some things that were done in the past aren't still good things to do.
Oh, yeah.
But, anyway. Well, welcome aboard, Jordan.
Thank you very much.
And you don't commute every day to Williamstown, do you?
I'm not Williamstown. I live right now in Burlington, so I still commute, but not as far.
That would be a real of a commute.
Yes, that would be pretty unreasonable.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for staying over.
Oh, yeah. Got a lot done.
And I hope you continue to have a great week here at MBU. Listen, we go again.
Appreciate the teaching.
Highgate and for the whole semester, for that matter. So, thank you.
We're all set.
All right.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you all. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Do you want your seat over here? I can go over there.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Now, we are going to take a look at our budget. We can't do the funding video because we don't have the information here because we don't have one. So, but we do have Laura here. Oh, wait a minute. Well, Pat?
Yes.
When would you like to, in the budget discussion? Is that when you would like to have that happen?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, there, if I recall the conversation we had about this notion of a special educator joining the fourth grade team, there were some questions that were not budget-related, but there's certainly elements of budget implications as well. So, I don't, whatever the pleasure of the board is to...
Well, let's go back to the, let's go back to where we left off at our last meeting and go from there. Which is talking about a co-teaching model in fourth grade next year.
Correct.
With how many regular classroom teachers?
Two general ed classroom teachers and one full-time special educator.
Okay. And as I recall, one of, a large concern was around equity and making sure that we are providing equal opportunities for all our kids. And not just, and not just for a year, but for, you know, as it continues along through. And how it works, how it will work when you have... Well, what, well, you had some good questions, Chris. One of them was, what happens when, if you had a student in this, if your child was in this classroom and when they go on to fifth grade and then it's a different structure? How does that impact the youngsters? How does that impact parents? And other things that probably we really don't value?
Well, I, you know, I think in many situations, there is a shift from grade to grade anyway in how services might be delivered. There's a slight difference in that. I think what we're looking at is an opportunity to develop some skill and around co-teaching. And the pieces that go with co-teaching around the collaboration, the focus of the two sets of expertise, right? This special educator set of expertise on learning and differentiation and classroom teacher expertise on content and bringing that into one context to focus on those students and using that as a, not a pilot, but an opportunity to see how that can play out in that grade level. When we've looked at consulting with trainers, right, people who will train for co-teaching. I reached out to someone last week and one of the recommendations is that you start small if you're going to sort of be asking schools to do more co-teaching. And co-teaching isn't really a service delivery or a direct instruction as it is a model for how we could provide special education in maybe a different way and providing more benefit to more students, right? So, the recommendation is to start small and start at one grade level and potentially start with a cohort of students where there are greater need, needs, right? So, looking at that, this particular grade level kind of fits that off, that, those opportunity points for us to see how we can make that work. And potentially then, looking at bringing other people in to be trained as well, right? We get a trainer in, we would train more than just a set of classroom, you know, one sort of, two teachers and a special educator. We would be looking to train a larger part of the staff potentially and even across the SU because part of what goes into the training and what some of the outcome is isn't just around that co-teaching, right? That's the title of it. But there's so much embedded in there around good instruction, keeping data, how do you plan together, how do you collaborate? So, there's more benefit, I think, than just the, just co-teaching. And to look at, it doesn't always have to be all or nothing. Oftentimes, co-teaching will happen with a subject area, right? A special educator will co-teach with a teacher that's just like charts or a portion of the day or math. It doesn't have to be every single component of their day. In this particular situation, we have the benefit of concentrating more of that with this group, just given the ratios and the numbers and knowing that as a startup, that might be beneficial, especially around the planning time. But looking at co-teaching as, for me, and I think looking sort of holistically, it's one more piece of our continuum. It's one more way we can serve kids. It's not instead of, right? And so, some of the research will say, there's a recent report out around special ed spending. And it indicates that co-teaching isn't necessarily, right? The research is up and down sometimes with co-teaching. And in this particular case, the emphasis is on, co-teaching isn't going to get kids the extra, right? We know that kids need an additional bit of teaching or direct instruction. Co-teaching won't necessarily get that, but what it does is condenses the resources in one area and then you provide the additional instruction beyond that. So, a special educator in this particular case would be available to then be part of that first instruction in co-teaching and provide additional instruction as they would now, right? So, giving that direct instruction on top of. Likewise, I think the emphasis on, and the training that we would receive if we were to go with the person I spoke with last week really emphasizes that data and setting up systems to monitor the effectiveness of co-teaching. So, really helping us to figure out, how are we going to know this works, right? And at the end of the day, or the end of the year, mid-year, no, is this, is this what we expected to have happen for this group of kids? And then potentially being able to continue that model or the opportunity for that model at another grade level. Does that answer part of the question?
Well, I think it does. We've tried co-teaching here before. So, I, what you last talked about is setting up targets to know whether it works and not, if something isn't working for kids, they get one shot at fourth grade. And so, it needs to be the best shot. They can be on whatever grade. And that applies regardless. a special educator for every grade is a financial hurdle?
Right. And, well, I mean, I think, yes. I think in many ways, we don't have the luxury of having a special educator for every, you know, for two classes.
Exactly.
Financially or simply if we want to hire a special educator, right? We just can't find them. But I think that doing the groundwork and setting the stage for co-teaching at this particular grade level with this particular scenario then allows us to grow that. And it might not mean a special educator per grade level. It might mean that pick and choose, right? So, is this cohort needing emphasis in reading, writing, right? And that's where co-teaching happens. Or is it in math down the road, right? So, maybe in another year or so. Also, with this particular special educator, there may be, well, be opportunity and need for her to serve other students that aren't in the fourth grade, right? We might have, she might have a set of skill or there might be a need in the building during another time of the day and she can fill that need. So, I don't know without, without knowing that schedule and how, so how that's been understood, how that might work. But I think there's certainly flexibility for that person to be supporting elsewhere.
Could I add something also?
Sure.
And I can't speak for all special educators, but I know that in Highgate and as it is in many schools, special education is a very different role than a classroom teacher. And co-teaching allows for that distinction to be minimized, if not eliminated. You know, I often, if I walk into a classroom, you know, you sometimes watch a special educator looking for ways in which they can pick up what's going on in class and then help support the kids, which is really not even close to being as effective as someone who is part of the planning process, that designed the unit, designed the projects, designed the activities, things like that. You're just kind of that person that comes in and says, "Okay, well, there's my kids, you know, that I need to, make sure I need to provide support for, but I didn't, you know, I didn't put this thing together. I'm just gonna help them now that I know what they're being asked to work on." So, I think, you know, if we could have a special educator at every grade level, it'd be amazing because I think that they would be much more of part of the team.
It would be expensive. I'm just telling you.
Yeah, Noah, I already know about this.
So, and I know for years, and you've heard this, especially for people that have been on the board a little bit longer, going back to before me also with, and now I can't even remember it, out of Kansas.
Swift.
Thank you. You know, all means all. And these are all our kids. And that's really hard, it's not impossible, but it's harder to achieve that when you've got a special educator that isn't part of, a close part of the team. Now, we'll have some special educators here that say that they are very, feel, very connected to the team. And they probably do, but not to the extent that you would if you were involved in planning every day together or working every day together. And so, we still have that notion of, and you'll hear it from time to time, those are, insert the special educator's names, those are her kids. You'll hear that from a classroom teacher. And we're getting, we are making progress about not hearing that, but it still, it still happens. You know, those are her kids. And that's not what we want. And I certainly think if you had a co-teaching model, they, the two general ed teachers would not be referring to the kids as her kids. They would be their kids because all three are in on the entire teaching process. So, I don't know where that gets us to sustainability, but it certainly takes us, I think it would help demonstrate a lot of the positives that we've been striving for and have just found a little bit more elusive, a little bit harder to get to in our current model. So...
So, just for a little background, what percentage of our students might be considered their students? As far as school-wide? How, how big of a contingency of students is that?
So, you're talking about what percentage of our students are?
Special ed.
Yes, on IEPs, specialization versus none. Tony, are you pulling that up quickly?
Well, I'm pulling it out, but I think I'll do the percentage.
But I think, I wanna say about 15%.
A little higher in that grade.
Well, in that grade, 25.
That grade is higher.
Yeah.
Right. So, that grade is significantly higher. But school-wide, I wanna say about 15%.
So, fourth grade is about 5%?
Right.
No, no, next year's fourth grade.
Sorry, yeah. Yeah, we're talking about, yeah, next year, this current third grade.
15.
Is that because of the developmental age? Or is that just this particular group of students coming?
I'm gonna say it's more just this particular group, but I think you do find that the number of IEPs, as a student goes through school, it grows. But I'm gonna defer to Tony on that.
Generally, I think the target, I mean, an understood sort of target would be 15%, 17% in a general population. Right, you guys are 15 in this building, that particular grade level.
So, 15% is a general average across the country?
Yeah, state average is, yeah. 15, 17.
The state average is 16.
Questions?
I do. I have a question. One of my concerns, last month when we were talking about this, was where are we going with this in the long run? I mean, I, you answered some of my questions in what you said, but I still are, is this our eventual goal? To get to where the whole school's co-teaching? Is it still gonna be something that we wanna keep in just a couple of grades? Because I mean, one thing that we've been talking about a lot in the last year is consistency throughout the school. And I guess that's where I get hung up, is the lack of consistency. If these kids go through one model, third grade, jump to a new model, fourth grade, and then get to back to the old model in fifth grade.
Right. And I think that the shift in model, so I'm trying to paint a picture of what that would look like for the student. So, maybe in one grade, currently, the current situation would be they'd be in class, they'd be in, they might receive support from a special educator in class or a parent educator in class. And then sometimes, they might go out and get direct instruction, say, in reading. If we shift to a co-teaching model, which sounds like a big thing, but, and in many ways, it's a shift, but for the student, what they would then experience in the following year in a co-teaching model might be they're in a class with their teacher with 20 students and a special educator in there, teaching with the teacher. So, they have two teachers, right? Or three teachers if we combine the third classroom teacher. So, they're in class more, but they also still might get opportunity and they would need to be, right? If they have a learning disability and they need the opportunity to get direct instruction, reading, they're still at some point going to be with their, that special educator, who they're with the rest of the day or in these other classes to get that direct instruction in literacy. So, from a student perspective, I'm not sure it would feel and look a lot different, right? So, in the current model, they're in class anyway. That's, we do that. The special educator's going to support or the parent's going to support. And maybe not all day, but in designated areas, and then they get their support. But in a co-teaching, there's like a two-teacher kind of thing going on. There's just more planning around it. So, the difference, I think, for us is really trying to step up to what the state is asking us to do and sort of the pressures around getting high-quality people in front of our kids, getting kids access to highly-trained professionals, right? So, the more we can have our special educator in the classroom, the less we have to rely on a parent educator providing that support in the classroom. So, looking at how we do that and then the benefit as well for all of the kids in that classroom. Everyone's benefiting. So, there's an element of early identification, right? Or that expertise kind of trickle-in for all students. So, whether or not the model of co-teaching, we say, well, whole school's moving to co-teaching, I don't know that that's really where we're ready to say that yet. But I think what we're trying to do is develop skills and expertise so that we can say, we at least know that people have the training, the understanding about what goes behind this collaborative kind of teaching to say we could do it in pockets at least, right? We can develop that across. So, it might not be all or nothing, right? But it might be a way that we start doing business in terms of getting special educators with kids more frequently or getting those highly-trained people in there more frequently. So, that's a piece of that. And I think that this particular scenario of two teachers and a special educator seems like a pretty nice little gig in terms of, you know, that's a small group of kids with high resources. But I think for, I think it makes sense in a way to start with that, right? So, so what we've heard is start with a grade level, start with high density, start with people who wanna do it, have some, some training around it, where the enthusiasm is, and build that from there. So, I think we're sort of in that, and the stars are aligned in that way to work on that and just sort of to trickle that out.
It's budget season. So, my question would be, how would that impact special education dollars in a classroom?
When we look at the numbers at Highgate, so one of them, without even thinking of co-teaching, right? So... right? So, we looked at, I, I've kind of looked at your ratios in terms of your per student, like, special educator per caseload, but also special educator per general ed density. We kind of sometimes think of, of density of just students in general per special educator, because that's a set of expertise that can be, kind of disseminated out regardless of category, right? So, regardless of a caseload, so one to 10 maybe on a caseload special ed, but thinking about one to 60, say, of special educator per all students, right? So, your densities are, right now, with the number that you have of four special educators, are on the high side in the SU, meaning there's fewer special educators per gen ed population in Highgate than, say, across the SU. So, we're trying to get to that place of one to 50, one to 70, 80, it's kind of, I mean, there's a range depending on other factors, right? Depending on all the other demographics that we know impact learning, to look at that range. And so, one thought is that regardless of co-teaching or not, we, we've planned to potentially put in that, that other special educator in this building to support, just to offset and get the ratios down, get the density down.
So, there's no rule anymore about if you are a special educator or you are a para who's working with special education kids, that that's where your time needs to be spent and not elsewhere?
There is still that, that rule in terms of that's where special ed reimbursement comes from.
Yes, yes.
Right? But there is also, there is allowance, because the AOE and the, you know, and our regs really speak to special educators being able to function in an MTSS, an EST, or the Educational Support System. And so, there is an allowance for 20% of a person's special ed time to be utilized with other students, five oh, students on 504s or EST plans. So, that's where we are able to access special educators for other, the other part of the population.
They can only be 504 kids and EST kids?
Well, no, no.
Oh, okay, okay, that's fine.
Right. So, so that's where we're getting that, that allowance to, to work with other students. We have, we often have other students in small groups with, with, you know, so we, we are able to utilize it that way, but, but we're able to use that other 20% for special and, and paras. So, there's an expectation really that we're, we're working within this system of support and, and providing supports to other students, not just students on IEPs.
Connie, could I ask one question, Connie?
Wait a minute, Jay. This is a Highgate Board meeting?
Thursday.
Okay. So, will we finish? Okay. Other questions?
On this ad, I did some quick numbers here. Our SU percentage is about 19% across the SU, if that's the right IEP.
That's true.
Yeah. So, we're a little higher than state average, but I think we've been so for a number of years, so it's nothing new.
Okay. Anything else?
I think I might have a question, but I'm not sure it's allowed in the open session.
Is it evaluative of an employee?
No, but it's about a contract.
About a contract.
And a responsibility outlined in a contract.
Is it, were premature public knowledge, if there were place that person, that substantial was available?
I don't, it's not about any one person.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay. So, last time, we talked about reducing the number of paras in that grade, because we would be increasing the number of professional staff. So, if it was down to two classrooms and we only had, if we had three professional staff and one para, I'm a little bit worried about what happens to these kids when they go to lunch and recess, and who takes them from class to class, because we know that in the professional contract, that there's no recess duty, there's no lunch duty. So, that leaves one para to handle two classrooms worth of students, and that's concerning to me.
Well, in this particular situation, we would go from three para educators to two para educators. So.
So, are any of those para educators direct one-on-ones, so that should there come, should something come up with that person's one-on-one, that they would leave the scene and leave that other para by themselves?
No, we, there, there are some staff who are assigned to individual students, but you would still have at least one small group para educator assigned to the class. So, there, there would still be adequate coverage. But, but you're right, if we were ever to expand the model of co-teaching and did find ourselves reducing the number of para educators under the current contract, we, that would be a bridge we would have to cross at some point about how do we, how do we provide supervision at recess and at lunch, and in the bus lines if we don't have the para educators to do that. So, that is something down the road that would have to be dealt with.
So, you don't think that would be an issue if this went through with the fourth grade next year?
Not in this particular grade level next year, no.
And I'll also say, and I don't know how productive it will be, but part of what we've discussed in preparation for this is reaching out to the association with a potential side letter on a trial basis to see if there's some allowance of deviation from that contract language. So, we're looking at all options, we're trying to make something work and work better.
From the professional contract?
Yeah.
Connie?
What's up?
The question I have is, the state is discussing cuts in special education, and one of those cuts is possibly the removal of para educators. So, if that's the case, and that does happen, how does that affect this co-education plan of yours?
They're discussing cutting, I'm not aware of.
Maybe overall staff reductions?
Let me, let me see if I can help out. The thought is out there, and Tony has talked about it, as that's at that, that if you can get qualified people, the bottom line is, who do you want teaching your kids? A professional or a para? And if the para has training for those sorts of things, that'd be great. And, and many cases, that's true, but it's not in all cases. So, I think the state is talking about, and has been for several years then, about, about doing that. I don't know if they have anything specific on the agenda at this point in time.
Yes, they do.
What?
They do?
Yeah.
I can't talk so long.
It's been on for a while.
Yeah, right.
It's the Jean Greco model, the, it's national research, but it was done at UVM. And the bottom line, there are districts that are moving forward with that, Randolph was one of them, where they, they exchange three paras for one licensed teacher. And the, the theory behind that is, you, you want your most highly-skilled educators working with your most needy students. And in the past, the solution has been, if there is a behavior issue or an academic need, we hire a para. And the research doesn't show that that's the best way to go. The complication is how you meet the needs of the rest of the school, and that's a challenge. The Randolph model, the contract still has teachers doing recess and doing their own copying, so yours is a little bit different than that, but I don't think it's insurmountable on a small scale. If we were to say the whole school's gonna do it, we'd have some problems right now.
You'll prevent me from, I'll explain to you what I know.
Jay.
Okay, if you don't wanna know, that's fine.
Jay, I want us to get done of meeting. We have, we have a lot of important work we need to do.
I don't wanna take you by second. If you don't wanna know, that's your first.
Anything more about this? Thank you.
Only to Connie's question about the budget. So, how does that affect our, our budget as we go to co-teach? A little bit more, a lot more? You asked a question, and I don't, don't know if you've gotten the answer.
I, I'm sorry, I missed something. What was your question again, Sharon?
You asked her if, what that would mean for our budget.
Oh, financing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it sounds like the girls who, well, let me just go back to when we had Swift. Okay, when we had Swift, the idea was get rid of the silos of what kids have to go to and make that, make the kids in the room all our kids, okay? And so, it didn't matter who helped you, all right? Because they're all our kids. And my understanding was at the time, the state was, was being, taking into account the fact that this is a new system and we're trying to do it, so they, there was more flexibility in that. So, I, so I don't know how it works, how it's going to work.
Could I?
Yep.
I'll add what I, what I suspect, and if anyone wants to challenge it or add, but what I suspect is that we would actually see some savings, because we'd be reducing a general ed classroom teacher. So, right, you know, right now, there are three third-grade teachers, and next year, there would only be two. The third would be a special educator. But if we're also adding a special educator on the SU budget, that, that percentage of that is reimbursable. So, I think if you.
That's 20% towards general population assistance.
So, if you're paying less for your personnel, plus if we're also able to reduce one para educator as well, we're hopeful that there, there would be savings. And I'm hoping that anyone to.
Well, just, just keeping in mind, that's absolutely true, and that's what I was going to say in this situation, but just keeping in mind that expenses still hit the general fund and revenue is offsetting your tax rate, so you do see the full expense in your budget, but then it's a revenue, the intensive revenue, he's talking about that 50% of the special ed cost comes in on the tax rate side and the revenue side, just to be clear.
Okay. Budget time.
Any other questions for Tony?
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Connie, do you have a copy of your?
I do.
Thanks.
Thank you, Laura.
Make some copies. It's time.
Do you have a copy, or you want a blue one? So, you know where it is.
Sure. Mine's white.
So, I'm, I guess we've already talked on the salary lines, but I've also, in under instructional, I have updated column movements, that's one of the changes I made since last month. I also needed to move a proportion of a teacher down into the grant funding positions. I had neglected to put Ed Niono, it was probably 1%.
I wondered where she was.
So, she, I moved her down. That's why you see a little fluctuation there. And I do realize that the fiscal year '18 anticipated is almost the exact same number as the fiscal year '19 proposed, which tells me some alarm for a moment, because it's almost the same number, but it's just due to all the, the staffing changes and then the negotiated agreements, veteran staff being more expensive than newer staff being hired, so that is a good number. I thought Connie might ask about that.
I got it right there.
What color was it in, Connie? Okay, and so, other than that, I do have the reduction in force of a few support staff reflected in this, trying to satisfy some, or be a little more efficient or respectful to the bottom line. And maybe Pat can speak, or Winn can speak more to that after. Other than that, I have municipal retirement rates have changed. It used to be that the employer paid 4%.
I wondered about that.
Yeah, we just got, actually, just received that a few days ago. That's going up to 4.125. We haven't seen Plan A go up in quite some time. And Plan B is going up to 5.625 from, from 5.55.
5.55 is going up to what?
5.5, 5.55 is going up to 5.625. Four is going up to 4.125.
Thank you.
Dental rates will be decreasing 2%. These are, you know, small, small things, but I'm just gonna highlight them, because they are changes. Assessments, oh, also under special ed, I have a staffing reduction there under support staff, your local special ed, under the 1210. Assessments, all years assessments, early childhood, special ed admin, special ed expenditure, and central office have all been updated to what was approved at the last Franklin Northwest meeting. Most of them have, have been reduced since your last draft.
Can we, can we back up for a minute?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm on instructional programs, 119. I, in the note, so I got third, fourth, BI, I get that one. I don't know what CM, CIP, what does CM stand for?
CIP, what is CIP?
CMA is Comprehensive Improvement Plan.
Right.
So, what is CM? Their initials, I think.
You're on 119?
I'm on 1 night, wait a minute.
That's something to say in that.
I'm on, yes, under paraprofessional sal.
Connie, I'll remind you.
No, I'm on.
Instructional programs?
I'm on paraprofessional salaries in the instructional programs.
Connie, I'm just gonna remind you that this draft is marked confidential, because there are notes on this draft that are only for the board.
Okay, all righty, all righty, yep. Okay, well, just, so I tried to figure out some.
I'm hoping, I was hoping that Pat could remind me what.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay.
I will recall at some point, but it's CI, it's something around CIP work, so I'll have to look through my different tabs to see what.
No, it's okay, Laura.
Okay.
I, can we still do that one? I'm on 121 tutor salaries. How are we using those?
Which one are you on, Connie?
I'm on 121 under instructional programs.
That would be for any school year tutors that were necessary. Sometimes we have a, like, you'll notice the anticipated for this year is actually about $4,200, it depends on student need. I believe Pat can elaborate on that, but that the line below it would be for the summer services.
And, and I had a question about that. Summer services, are we talking summer school?
Summer school, but also can be tutoring during the summer.
Okay.
And again, sometimes those, it's a, there's a whole lot of large fluctuation depending on student need, we don't know what that's gonna be.
Okay, and then, and this one's for you. I'm on 300.1 ESL purchase services. Have we explored a more flexibility on how we provide those services to kids? For the ESL, is English as a second language?
Correct. When you say more flexibility, I, I'll just say that last year, you had 15, this year, you have 22. So, we have many more students. I don't know what you're thinking about flexibility, other than the, the staff member goes school to school to provide that.
You and I have had this conversation many times.
Yeah.
Is there a cheaper way to provide this service, Wendy?
No.
I know we evaluate, we did talk about if he could provide services in larger chunks so that the.
And I, I've worked with him on that. Part of that's the schedule of the school. We, we've explored that, so if that's what you mean by flexibility, I've already.
That's what, that's what I mean.
Been down that road with him. And we were making some headway at 15 students, we lost some, some purchase when, when.
Highgate has 22 ESL students?
22 across the SU.
Okay.
A large, a large amount of those, I think it's 40 or 45% now is in Highgate.
Yes.
I do have a copy of his caseload and students that are being provided services. In fact, he also gets an hourly report.
I, it's, I'm not, yes, we need to provide the service, there's no question about that. Okay, I understand that. My question is, the lost time when you're traveling from school to school, the time where you're sitting in your office or the library or something, doing something, and you're not with kids? And so, I'm just looking for a way to be able to provide as much as we can for our kids and then do it in a, an efficient way.
I just think from that conversation with Frank that Becky and I had, there's rules around the frequency of those services and the allotted amount of time, so it didn't much allow for, you know, to have him be in Highgate all of one day and then, or maybe two days a week, and then Sheldon different days to avoid all of that loss of time.
I will visit that again, Connie.
Okay.
Can you, in 15 seconds, explain exactly what services would look like received from this person?
Right. He provides direct service with the majority of those students. He monitors their, their continued progress. He also works directly with the teachers in, in some of the planning, and he delivers many times in the classrooms, support work for students on particular topics that the teachers and he work out.
But he's not a linguist?
No.
And he doesn't speak any foreign languages?
I believe he does, but he doesn't speak all of them that, of the students we have. So what he's doing is he's adapting curriculum and helping students to learn in, in the best way that they can, given the, the primary language is not English.
I'm not sold on the program.
We don't have a choice, it's covered law.
Is there a process, is there a way that we take a look at the program and evaluate the program?
Yeah. I've met with him a number of times on this. I do it every year. We thought last year that we had some ability to, to reduce it, and we went nose to nose with Rabanne NEA on it, and we, we didn't win.
It just feels like everything you explained just now about what they're supposed to do is stuff that should already have been done. So why does it, you know, like, you said, checking in with the teachers and with the students and adjusting curriculum. Those seem like things that we should be able to do without his oversight. You know what I'm trying to say?
Right. Maybe in the ideal world, but the reality is, teachers have 12, 15, 18 students. You can differentiate to a certain degree, but the, the mission of this program is to make sure that those students are not falling behind because of lack of ability to comprehend what the teacher is saying. Some of these parents don't even, don't even speak English. And so he's working, he's working in that, that capacity to help them be successful.
I do.
Okay, keep going.
I am under 2120 Counseling Services.
Okay.
No, this isn't just a general one, Laura, because I noticed that the workerman's compensation is going down. I think I already talked about it.
I think I adjusted based on the actual bill last year.
Okay, well, so I was just wondering why that was. So now, this is a Pat question. 2150 Speech, Pathology, and Audiology, number 300.
Speech services.
So it is contracted services? And, and who delivers those contracted services?
Depends. Sometimes it's a person that comes here, sometimes it's, we go out for those services. Basically, students on, with disabilities that are not on IEPs that require additional speech services.
Okay. Do we know how many students there are there, Pat?
I don't.
Okay.
It's, I want to say two or three.
Okay.
Under instructional supplies, you're discontinuing the math program soft, software in this Engage New York? Is that the new math?
No, it's the Disengage Math Program Software, so that's-
Right. This Go Math.
Yeah, originally, there was going to be, there was some discussion that the, the Go Math program that we were trying this year, there was some initial discussion at the online portion of it, where they have videos and engage kids in math concepts. We, we, we were not as impressed with that as we originally had hoped, and so there was some thought that, but they wanted also $18 a student for that, for all of our students. And if we didn't-
For the technology piece?
Yeah. And if we didn't feel that great about it, we, there was some initial thought that we would discontinue that part of it, but keep the consumable part, which is just another word for the workbooks.
Right.
And then we decided that that wasn't really going to be worth it, that we could achieve that same result with Engage New York, or also sometimes known as Eureka Math. So it is, it was a one-time experiment, and we gave it a shot. I will say that bringing Jen Hubbard over from Swanton as a math interventionist from Swanton to a math leader here, who has worked with Engage New York for a number of years, that certainly helped us kind of make our decision that following Swanton's lead, they've had some pretty good success with it, that we would not, we just didn't feel as comfortable investing as much money as Go Math was going to cost us off of the grant year. Because if you remember, last year, a very large percentage of it was grant funded.
Right.
We didn't, we didn't feel it was worth it to go forward with it at the expense. It would have been basically $25 a student for the whole program.
It's a little pricey.
It was very pricey, but, you know, given our math scores, we were willing to-
You had to do something, yes.
Spend something if it was going to be helpful.
Right.
But we ended up just not being as sold on it as we had hoped. So the Engage New York is, what's nice about it, it is virtually free. We, the, the money that's represented there, the $3,000, is basically kind of the teacher's guide. We wanted to get each teacher a guide to the program, but all the curriculum materials in it are basically free. I mean, copying, copying and things, but, so we felt that at least that we would get the guides to go with it. But that really is our only math instructional pro, cost, is the teacher's guide and the copying that goes with the materials.
Is Engage New York going to be used as a supplement to math instruction in the classroom? Or is Engage New York a program?
Um, boy, maybe somewhere in between. I, I don't think it would be a supplement, but at the same time, it's not an actual program. I think if they follow, you know, the teacher guides, that it, that it leans more towards, a little bit towards a program on activities and things that you can use, but it is not a step-by-step booklet, do this chapter, do this chapter, do this chapter.
Okay, so by using Engage New York, then there's a real possibility that different things are going to be happening in different classrooms?
Well, we're hoping not, that, you know, one of the, one of the things that Jen has talked to us about at Swanton, and we just had a presentation yesterday by Joan Lubra and two other people from Swanton, is that things have to remain pretty tight within the grade levels. That what is happening in one first grade classroom has to be happening in the second and third classrooms of that grade level, which is not what was happening before. Before, we've had, you and I have had conversations about it, about here's the standard, how you get there is up to you. That's, that's the place where I would least want to be. And we thought that having a math program would put us all on the same page, but the math program itself was not something that the kids found very engaging or were very enthusiastic about it as much as we had hoped they would be. So we are kind of hoping that, again, having teacher, teachers' guides to Engage New York and with Jen's knowledge and experience coming from Swanton, that grade levels will be working much more closely together to make sure that not only are they providing similar instruction, but even hopefully at that point, sharing of students.
Awesome.
And doing some intervention for kids who might need it. So if there's a, if all three first grade teachers teach a unit in addition, and they're finding that some kids did really well, there are some kids that didn't do so well, that can they group those kids who didn't do so well, and they maybe go do one of the first grade teachers, who gets some help from an interventionist, that maybe extra support, where if there's a larger group of kids who did pretty well, then they maybe go to a different first grade teacher and actually get some enrichment to try to go even further. But we're not there.
Okay, so you'll appreciate that, I'm going to say, they probably don't want me to say it, but you'll appreciate what I'm saying.
Sure, I'll appreciate it.
Well, maybe you will be. So when we have dedicated math instruction, then wasn't that essentially just because of the structure, making sure that what was happening with each classroom, within each of the classes, within a grade level, we're getting the same instruction?
Well, when you say dedicated math instruction, are you talking about a particular time period in Highgate, or?
I'm talking about a, a, the sixth grade teacher, of the three sixth grade teachers, we'll say there are three, one of them was responsible for teaching math.
When, when one teacher taught, yes.
Right. You don't have to answer. But-
There are, as you know, and I will state this publicly, that you are related to a fabulous third grade teacher here.
I, you know, I, I don't think you should say that.
I shouldn't say that?
No. No, I don't.
There are upsides and downsides to that one teacher doing math for everybody.
Okay. Other questions? I have another one. I'm on school-wide technology, and it is 2225, and it's number 440. And it has to do with the tech equipment lease. And I should remember this, and I should be able to find the paper, but I can do neither. So our first year, our lease cost was 5,000, uh, $5,506. I thought we were doing it for three years and that, that the payment was spread out equally over the three years. So does this mean we're going to have more computers?
This was another lease that Pat proposed.
Okay, so now we have two leases, is that what we're saying?
We don't yet, he's proposing one, another one.
Okay, then that explains that. Glad I asked. So this is probably a good time to talk about that, Pat.
Just increasing our one-to-one. Just getting it pre, it's completely 336.
Okay, so how many more computers are we going to be purch, leasing? And is it a three-year lease?
Three-year lease.
Okay.
That's, that's the cycle we'd like to stay on.
75 or 79 units with the other one that were purchased.
79, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. So we would do, this would be, I think, the final grade level, that we would then be one-to-one all the way through.
And the same deal at the end? When the leases are up for a dollar, we can buy the computers?
I think that's, I'm not, I'm not overly familiar with the-
The way we deal with, we've been dealing with municipal leasing, but I will tell you that the most recent leasing that we looked into, the rates had almost doubled. And so we were actually able to borrow through a bank, not necessarily for computer equipment, but for another purpose. So I would look at that too. Wouldn't necessarily go to a lease, we have that in there, I mean, as the rubric or the avenue of accomplishing this, but there's lots of different ways we could do that.
Okay.
So instead of leasing, buying computers, you're saying?
Just taking, just borrowing the money and paying it back over three years, banking the loan rates were, tend to be, seem to be a lot more favorable than the leasing rates that we just got, but that was for a different purpose, just so you know, we'll, we'll look at that. It's not, we have leasing, but-
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
And then I just have one more, and I don't think you can answer it, but maybe Chris can. I'm on plants, operation, and maintenance, which is 2540, and it's the last one, 730. And we're asking for $26,800 for FY '19, and do we have, do we know what we're going to be purchasing? Do we have ideas about what we're going to purchase?
I just level funded that line, so that's my response.
Okay.
Well, yes, I, I do know some of the equipment he's looking in. Needs a new floor scrubber was one of them. I think there was a, a special shop back they need for the wax, I think that was another one.
I think they got one of those just past year. But anyway, okay.
I don't know, he was supposed to send me a note, I never got it, but, and I didn't have a chance to talk with him today.
Okay.
But I do know there was, he did give me a list of stuff that they are looking to upgrade or replace or add because they just don't have it.
But that would fall under equipment, though? Equipment's usually something that's not consumable, so it lasts a certain amount of, you know, a little-
Yeah.
A little while, okay, larger, I'm just kidding. Just to make sure I'm budgeting in the areas. Do you want me to go through your tax rate? If there's no more?
Yep.
Or the, the last page I include?
I do, but I think people are still looking.
Oh, okay.
Ready for the revenue page?
Yes.
Okay, Noah, I'll set.
Yeah.
Okay, Laura.
Okay, so the first, at the top, you'll, you'll note that you're reflecting your budget or the general fund amount that you're proposing or considering proposing is $5,125,240, an increase of 2.86% over last year. Again, that is just a number that is reflected in the article without anything to compare it to necessarily. And then we take into consideration the revenues, which we net from your proposed expenses. Revenues are up about, are proposed to be up approximately $50,000, with one caveat that I do not have an audited fund balance yet. It's supposed to be to me beginning of next week, so I'm using an un-audited fund balance at this point, so if that changes, it has an impact on your, your spending. I don't see that changing significantly, but, so then we get your net ed spending amount, which is increasing 2% or $88,000, or proposed to be increasing 2%. We divide that by your equalized pupil, which are, which is up 5.24 in Highgate, so that's helping your tax rate. We get your spending for equalized pupil, which is proposed to be 13,757. That's an increase of $51 or 0.37%, and those numbers are reflected in the article language. Keeping in mind that that is one of the lower in the state, we know that we're on the lower end of the state average for sure. We then divide that by the property yield to get, which is proposed to be 9,842. That's a decrease of $318, which negatively impacts your tax rate, but that's the state trying to fill the hole in the ed fund, or that they're projecting. So that gives us an equalized home set tax rate of $1.40. So then we need to take into account that we don't pay, not all of the students from Highgate attend Highgate Elementary School, some go to MBU, so the percentage of students that attend the elementary school is 57.95. And so we get a projected equalized tax rate of 81 cents. That is an increase of 3.2 cents. But then we have, also have to take into account the CLA, and so the home set tax rate would estimate, is estimated to be 74.8 cents, which would be an increase of 3.1 cents if all stayed- be an increase of 3.1 cents if all stayed as we are projecting. But we do know that the yield will change, revenues can change, so the only thing that we would be locking in, so to speak, would be your general fund amount.
Okay, so 3.1% plus the state?
No, it doesn't.
That's not the five cents plus the state?
There's no, this is.
It's 3.1 cents?
Yep.
Yay. Cross that right out.
They're compensating for that with the way that they've set the yield.
Oh, okay.
The hole in the ed fund, so it's not, a lot of people are thinking that they need to add now in the nine cents.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not, it says right in the letter from the commissioner, it explains that quite well, and it talks about, you know, schools that don't spend up to the two and a half percent increase to their spending for equalized pupil will not see that nine cent increase. It's if everyone in the state spent two and a half percent or increase their spending per equalized pupil by two and a half percent and all the revenues came in the way they thought, all would go up nine cents.
But that's not gonna affect us?
Well, it affects you through the yield, because the yield that they're proposing has gone down $318. And so that's having a negative impact on your tax rate. But your equalized pupils are up, your spending is, your spending, your net ed spending is only up 2%, and your spending for equalized people has traditionally been low. And so those things are helping you and your CLA going down also helps you, so you've got some things.
So that nine?
Nine cents?
So, no, not nine, I meant to say, so that, they're saying that if every school increases two and a half percent of their spending per equalized pupil, not their budget amounts, but that actual number of spending per equalized pupil, then it would go up nine cents?
I think it's 3.52% to the net ed spending overall.
And we're at 0.37% increase to our equalized pupil?
37, yes. It's $51.
Yep.
Which is, still keeps Highgate significantly less than any state average or even close to that. And I think your equalized people go up, the 5.24 has a major impact. We have some schools within our SU that are not so lucky this year.
I was just gonna say, you're up five, one of your fellow elementary schools is down eight, and they have a substantial impact as a result of declining CLA and the drop in equalized pupils. So you could, any school could be subject to the fluctuations of those. And two of these variables are, have been recommended by the tax commissioner to legislature, but they don't become law until legislature sees where all the budgets are and then they may do some adjustments that happens. So just know that it's not cast in stone yet.
It will definitely happen this year.
Yeah.
Questions?
Well, I would like to be able to answer that fella that comes to town meeting every year and asks, how much are his taxes gonna go up? He asked us.
Is that a Mr. Mascol?
I asked him.
No, no, it's not, no, I don't even know who the gentleman is, but.
I wish.
But there's really no good way to give an answer at that date, because we don't have control over all parts of the funding.
We have control over one.
Right.
That's your general fund amount, and it doesn't have as nearly the impact of some of these other things that the state sets.
There are five main variables you control, your budget.
I wish that wasn't the case.
Yeah.
I mean, I would one day love to give that fella an answer, but there's just no way to do that.
Well, and then also, people receive, a huge percent of the population in Franklin County and Vermont receive income sensitivity, and that also gets set by legislature, the threshold. So what we project is not necessarily what you're gonna see on your bill either.
Right. Is there some rumbling in the legislature about that?
Yes, there is.
What's the rumble?
Rumble is that they wanna simplify that and I'll take a look at it in a minute. The long and the short of it is, right now, you can get income sensitivity up to 140,000 adjusted gross income. The closer you get to 140, the less you're going to receive. If you're under 47,000, as it stands now, you don't pay more than 5% of taxes in combined municipal and school. So what it does is it really has a high level of adjustment to your property tax bill if you make less than 47,000. And if you make between 47,000 and up to 144, it diminishes as you get closer.
But that's part of what the state has to take into account also, because any taxes that aren't being paid creates a larger hole in the ed fund, right?
And it's income from two years prior.
It is, I think, I think you're right, it's two years prior.
So people who might be making less than 47,000 right now should not expect that this year. It'll happen in two years from now.
Yep, that's right. So it's a, what, that moderates that amount, but it's a fair amount of money. I used to know how mu, how many million was set aside for income sensitivity, but it's quite a bit. And so that's, that's the way that there's compensation.
So they're thinking of reducing the 147,000?
Yeah, I saw something about concentrating it mostly up to 90,000. Again, it's, they're just ruminations now.
Isn't that where it started, about 90,000?
Yeah, a few years ago.
Yeah, it did. And it used to be called the single circuit breaker and the double circuit breaker, there are all kinds of cutesy names. The double circuit was 47,000 or less, the single circuit breaker was about 95,000, and they didn't have anything above. But now about 72% of households in this area have some level of income sensitivity.
If you apply.
Right.
Yes, well, you're required to, because it's part of your, it's in your tax packet when you're doing your.
Yeah, you have to file the homestead.
That's right, it's a homestead declaration.
If you violate and you complete it correctly.
Well, that too.
I think there are some people who haven't done that for whatever reason.
I thought it said required.
I think it is.
Like anything else, I'm not sure that makes it happen right away.
Okay.
My mom owns a tax business, so I.
So, to just summarize, our ed spending, per pupil ed spending, equalized pupil, has increased by $51.
If you were to adopt this budget.
Based on the, based on the data as we know it now?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's what you'll see as a ballot item.
And, and the ballot item will say that our per pupil, our ed spending is increased by 0.37%.
Yes, it would say spending per equalized pupil of 13,757, which is an increase of 0.37%, and that would be prefaced by the dollar amount of, that the school directors deem necessary to educate students, which would be 5,125,240.
And that's just the Highgate Elementary.
What, you mean, yes, it's not MBU, not the town?
It's not the SU, it's just Highgate.
Well, the SU indirectly, yes, because of the, all the assessments are included in this.
Right. Now, if the taxpayers voted to not go with the increase or decided to decrease your budget, what does that do to your equalized student ratio and how does that affect the overall bill to the taxpayer?
It definitely would decrease your tax increase. It just, it's not like it's dollar for dollar like it used to be years ago, and it doesn't have as much impact as you might think, as much as like your, the number of equalized pupils or the yield or some of the other factors have much more.
Power.
Power in that calculation, so to speak. But it would reduce, if the general fund proposed budget went down or was asked to be decreased, it would have, it would positively impact your tax rate.
Right. I think people don't realize how that system works.
Yeah.
So that when it gets possession.
I can understand why they don't.
At town meeting, people don't understand why it's not a dollar for dollar.
There's a wonderful video on YouTube right now that we were.
Yeah, we're gonna show it tonight.
The, the SBA, just, it's the SBA, right?
The SBA.
It just came out where that really walks you, it's like a cartoon they came up with that walks you through the calculation, I think it's really valuable, 'cause I have a hard time explaining it.
Right, well, and I think taxpayers have a very hard time understanding that. And the school board has a hard time.
Yes.
But I'll just, I'll weigh in on this as well. The governor's asked that schools not increase their ed spending per equalized pupils more than 2.5%, and yours is 0.37. So that gives you, that tells public and it tells the governor and legislature that either by design or by circumstance or both, that you've done a good job in your budget. Again, I'll say, some of the variables you have no control over, so it's a little bit happenstance, but that's the reality of how that works.
And also, historically, over many, many, many years, at least eight that I've been here, the spending per equalized pupil has been at the, almost the bottom of the spending across the state, so this is just a comparison from last year, which is unfortunate.
Yeah, and sometimes you have to ask yourself, have we made a mistake?
It's a little bit flawed, and that is only compared to last year.
Are we not providing the opportunities that a significant majority of our kids need to have? You know, we can't, we can't do it 100%. I'd be crazy if we could, it'd look a lot more expensive, but, so.
Connie, can I ask a question?
Yes.
This is budget, right, we're discussing. Why is there never an opportunity to discuss the supervisory union budget at a town meeting? Where's the opportunity for the public to discuss that?
I think that's gonna change. No?
Meeting.
I think it's at the Franklin House Board meetings.
Yeah.
That's when that happens.
Do you mean before it's adopted or just to explain it once it's been adopted?
No, I mean before it's adopted. I mean, we vote on school budgets, why can't we vote on that portion of the budget?
Okay, so it's after the board has adopted it then? Because you.
No, that's too late, right?
Well, yeah, but you don't vote on, you're not voting on this budget now that we're presenting.
A portion of your budget that we vote on every year is supervisory union?
Correct.
All right, I wanna know how we have access to that.
Okay, okay, right, that's what I thought. I thought we were going to be doing more of that. I thought wrong.
Yeah, we talked about it in the Act 46 Study Committee. The legal reason is, an SU is not a municipality and therefore voters do not have the authority to vote on it. Where you influence that budget is at a supervisory union board meeting. And those budgets get, they start the deliberative process the same time the local budgets do, so you're talking November, December, and the final decision on the SU budget was made on January 3rd, I believe. So that's where you could, you could attend an SU board meeting and you could, you could ask questions and, again, learn more about it and reflect your interests or questions to your 15 board members, three from every, every town.
Or you could be on the SU board meeting.
And they're done that.
Try to dig in.
And they're done that.
That's all right.
Well, the reason, the reason why I ask is because there's a lot of flaws in that system. Number one, you've got three board members from Sheldon that vote on a high school budget that don't even belong to the high school. They're, they're part of that supervisory union, right? I mean, there's, I think the public should have some input, other than talking to 15 members who make a big decision on, now what is your supervisory budget overall?
The amount? Million, million plus, I think.
How much?
Well, are you, when you say supervisory union budget, do you mean all of the assessments? So special ed that had to be centralized, the central office, the early childhood program, all of them?
Supervisory union.
I can, I can send it to you, I don't have it with me right now, but it's a lot bigger than the number. Like, the special ed alone is millions of dollars.
Right, yeah.
I just oftentimes get confused about what people are asking when they say central office, which assessment you're talking about. But I can definitely get you that.
And we have the opportunity to cut or increase anybody else's budget, but for some reason, we don't have access to that budget.
That's, that's part of what the conversation was. In Maple Run, they have access to all of the expenses. If you have a single district, that's when you have access. So that's, that's one of the ways to influence that. We're not going in that direction, so it continues to be what it has been.
So. I, you know, but I, I think that one can, can show their displeasure or the need to have more information about it at least by just saying, and everybody here's not gonna like me, but just, you know, like, this is too much money for the SU, we don't want to approve it. Unfortunately, if the budget isn't approved, that's not what's gonna get cut.
I've been there, done that too, Connie.
Yeah.
Been there, done that too, that's what I'm asking.
Right, exactly.
I know what gets cut and what don't get cut.
Yeah.
I'm well aware. Don't necessarily agree with it, but.
Well, and I think too that a lot of people feel that the supervisory union budget doesn't have the transparency that you have on the ground floor, so to speak. I think people, it's big money, big numbers. People wanna know exactly where their $2,000 of money from their tax bill goes. And 2.8 million dollars goes to the town of Highgate, 1.8 million dollars goes to the SISCOY, but how does that break out for them? And I think people get nervous when they think that they can't look at that.
Well, you control over it.
Right, that's, exactly.
That's a nail on the head right there.
That's what Zeb is talking about. Because the taxpayers, there's no vote on it.
Exactly.
The only vote is for the SU board to approve it.
Right.
And then it's law, and here we're down, and the taxpayers don't have a town meeting to go and vote to approve it.
But you don't even have discussion about it. I mean.
We don't have much.
SU is pretty much off the table at town meeting.
Yeah.
And I think that's.
And that's, that's the law.
Right, that's by law, right? You're only supposed to talk about the.
Right. Now, why can't you talk about that? That's public information.
It's not the Highgate budget, which is what the purpose of the meeting is?
But a portion of that budget is.
Yeah, I was just gonna point out, I mean, I know it doesn't help the, your, the case that you're making prior to the approval, but I did wanna point out and make sure that you realize that in the back of your book in Highgate, you do have at least some information. I know, I realize it's minimal, but you do have some, as far as what's in the assessment.
We have a lot of fixed, fixed costs in a budget that are pretty much untouchable.
Right. There are a lot of, in our budget.
Yeah.
Fixed costs. I mean, when you think about what you really have say over.
It's about.
It used to be about 15%.
15%, that's all we have control.
I don't think it's any more than that.
But not now, we don't have that much.
No.
So, probably about the same. Salaries and benefits is 85% of your budget usually?
Right.
So we have control over like 15% of our budget?
Well, you have some control over that, because you do negotiate a contract, but not, not constantly every year, just Highgate, no.
Do you know where, where we would have that information about the idea that taxpayers have no say over the supervisory union budget? Do you have a statute or anything?
Title 16, section 261.
Here.
261A.
I don't think any statute states that the taxpayers don't have any input on it.
Well.
It just talks about whose authority it is.
Right.
I'm not allowed to talk.
261A is the supervisory union authority and that, one of those is fiscal management. And it talks about transportation and special ed and food service having to be approved through the central office, through the assessments.
I'll give you some, I'll give you some citations later, later while I look at those.
But one way to know would be if we were merged. Okay.
Can we, can we go down that avenue?
No, huh?
Can we go down that avenue?
To, to talk about merging or not merging?
Yeah.
No, because we're still talking about our budget.
So maybe in old business, we can discuss that?
Is it old stuff? Are we just old?
It gets old.
Should we have a timekeeper, Mrs.?
We do.
Yeah, I'm not very good at it. I know, it's.
Okay.
You're doing a wonderful job, don't worry.
Are you, can we make a motion?
We are.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented tonight.
I also will, I'm sorry not to interrupt you, but I also will need you to approve the article, so I'm. the article, so I'm just gonna need a minute to like give you the language.
Sure.
With the, because I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So, do we want our budget approval motion to include the total amount of the budget or should it?
Yes, you still wanna approve that, yeah.
So I make a motion to approve the budget for fiscal year 19 for $5,125,240.
I'll second that.
Are you ready to vote? All those in favor of Nulla's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries 4-0. Now we need to approve the wording, wait, Laura?
Yeah, just one, will you take me just a second?
I would like to say thank you for keeping the budget under control. We know how it is to do that. We, we know it's a pain in the road, but we all try to look out the best for our community, for our children, try to give them what they need, but also try to allow people to still live in our town.
Well, we have a responsibility to educate the kids.
Yeah.
You also have the responsibility of taxpayers.
Yes.
And also responsibility to keep building up to, so it's safe and doesn't have water coming in or we can heat it.
Right.
A lot of responsibilities they have.
And I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but.
Mr.?
Mr. Prinsville.
Yes.
I commend you for saying that the math program didn't work because, you know, sometimes we try things and they don't work, but gotta stand up and say, we tried it, but hey, it didn't work. Takes a big person to do that.
Well, thanks, I'll, I'll feel better if what we try next does work.
Keep plugging away.
Yeah.
While Laura's doing that, I have the citations. It is 261A and it's subsection 10 and 11. And I'll just read you some of the excerpts here. It doesn't really say that the voters don't have authority, but what it says is that the SU board will submit to each, each member's school district on or before January 15th, an estimate of its financial operations, a preliminary budget for supervisory union for the ensuing year. And under section 10, on or before June 30th of each year, adopt the budget for the ensuing school year. So I don't really know how, it seems like it's out of sequence, but this is the, this is the, the law that provides that.
Typical bump there.
So the bottom line is if you wanna change the way that's done, you have to talk to your representatives. We have no control over that.
You could also talk.
Say that, but if you're able to serve on the supervisory union board, you have plenty of control over that.
And then you have to also be responsible who you vote and be on the school board. I mean, unfortunately, at this time, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I don't, I think you should have some say in the SU board budget, because it is a big chunk of Highgate's tax bill. But as of right now, our hands are tied. I mean, I am on the SU board and I, I put as much responsibility into that budget as this one, but that's where we're at right now. I mean, that's, that's, it's not a good answer, but that's where we're at. So I, pressure on the representatives to change this is a good thing.
We'll agree to disagree, because I know where you're headed.
Well, the SU board can't, it doesn't have any authority on who votes on the, on the budget, you know, the whole town meeting and you vote on it, that sort of thing, do we?
Members, members of each district serve on that supervisory union board.
I'm on it, no.
Right, so, so when you vote on that budget, you have a say, correct?
Oh, correct, yeah, but you're talking about general town population voting on it?
Well, what I'm saying is there's no discussion about it. It's a done deal, 15 people decide.
Right.
What is it from all these towns? 15 people are making that decision. That's all.
And that's the way we have been doing it.
I know. Doesn't necessarily make it right, Dave.
We've been doing it way back when, oh yeah, you were on the board.
Right.
Yeah, that's it.
And I didn't agree with them, so.
And it hasn't changed then?
No, no, it hasn't.
And you didn't change it?
No.
Why not?
No, because they didn't wanna change it, Dave.
I'm in the same vote, bud.
I was outnumbered.
Are you ready, Laura?
Yes.
Okay, so here is the language for the article on the warning.
Shall the voters of the Highgate School District approve the school directors to expend $5,125,240, which is the amount the school directors have determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $13,757 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is .37% higher than, than spending for the current year. I'll make that motion, just.
So Nulla moves to approve the wording that Laura just read, a second?
Yep.
Are you ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the wording for the school, part of the town warning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries 4-0.
Just to say that now that I see this in print, .37 doesn't look a whole lot different than 37, so we may want to make sure that people realize when we read this article that it's .37% increase.
Make that point a little darker.
Yeah.
Or when it goes in, just without, yeah.
Yeah, just, just as I'm looking at it, I'm not sure that some people will, so we may wanna make sure.
They read 37%, they're gonna fall out of their chairs.
Yeah, yeah.
It's .37%.
.37. I saw it out of my chair.
I think the Highgate issue might be a crime scene if they thought it was 37%.
Well, there's just so much confusion around it, and the reason I say that is because last year it was actually a decrease, if you remember. It was a decrease of 5.5%. So I just, just to put it things in perspective, there's another article that I need you to approve for tax anticipation notes. Or the possibility of one being necessary as they usually are. And so it, it states, well, the voters of the Swan, sorry, Highgate School District.
Let's get that right.
Authorize the school directors to borrow money in anticipation of taxes. And we only do that as necessary until we receive taxes turned over from the town. And so typically that happens around August, possibly before, and we end up paying that off in December, and we borrow as needed only, and typically the interest rates are extremely low and have a minimal impact there, but it is possible, especially with Highgate has, is not projecting large carryovers the last couple of years.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Ready to vote? All those in favor of the article that grants the school, the school district the ability to borrow money and move taxes or waiting for taxes? Ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries 4-0.
I need the budget, I do have warrants with me tonight. Awesome.
You have what, a check?
Check warrants, yeah.
Okay.
I can come over and give you that article language also, if you need, okay, yeah.
Warrant, can you email it to me? That would work too.
I'll take this one out. Can we just give one of these to the secretary or two? These hot copies, just so she has the numbers.
Are there two here?
There should be, yep.
Okay.
You're welcome. Email it to you, if that's easier, I don't have your email though.
Okay, check warrants. These are for December. Excuse me. Accounts payable, $420,895.69. Payroll, $16,907.17. Payroll, other dispersion, disbursements, direct deposit, federal and state taxes, $302,574.27. Payroll deductions, $47,474.39. A motion is in order to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Nulla makes the motion, a second?
Yep.
David second said, are you ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the check warrants for the month of December, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries 4-0. Okay. Are we, Wynton, are you ready?
Nope, he's not.
Okay. So we shall go to board minutes. For the 14th of, of December. So because Richard's name appears later in the minutes, it doesn't have him being prison, being present. And so under who's there, Richard Flynn's name should be added.
I have one question under four, that's back board presentation. Right off, it says Principal Martin. Is that typo or?
It needs to be Hartnett.
Let's, let it change.
He didn't tell you?
We often copy and paste at central office.
Yeah.
Other additions, deletions, clarifications?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
As amended, as corrected?
As corrected.
I'll second it.
Ready to vote? All those in favor of approving these minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Okay. Are you ready now, Mr.? Have we got a, are you ready?
Oh, you wanna do the video now? Is that what you're ready for?
That's what's on the agenda.
Okay, yeah.
Laura, I, I have the bills.
Is that okay, does that work for a run up there?
Yes, thank you.
You're in touch with that.
Yes. Yes.
Sounds great.
We'll get there.
Yes, sir.
Last time it was an issue, we didn't have.
Yeah, I had it working in my office today.
It's a touchy little speaker.
That's nice pictures.
Yeah.
I could try my computer, Ben.
It just worked in my office.
I think it has to do with you.
Yeah, okay.
Are you also connected to the smart board right now? It's probably, it's not using the right speakers, it's trying to use the other speakers because you're connected to the smart board. It doesn't know what, probably doesn't know what to do.
All right, why don't you plug speakers into yours? Or plug speakers into yours.
Sorry. I, I don't know the exact URL of the.
Yeah, I'll get it to you.
Oh, but I'm not interested in the smart.
Do the speakers on the smart board work?
They do.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, I'll try that. This video, this video goes on a little bit quickly, but it gives you all the information literally step by step about how the state makes the calculation and everything you need to make it yourself. So if you watch, you can watch it on at home, yeah. I think it's on YouTube, or we can get the link.
Yeah, it's VTVSBA.org. V T V S B like Boyd.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, A dot O R G.
Last time we used these, someone went on the back of the speakers at the top and did something.
Laura, you gotta plug into yours.
We all need to pay attention to it.
Sorry, I didn't, because I thought you were.
Yeah, it's not working in yours, let's try yours.
Yeah, you sent me the link.
Uh, no, well, just give it to you. What I'll do is I'll start it over again when you're ready.
V T.
V T, the S B A dot O R.
Laura, you're trying it through your computer?
Yeah.
You're ready to wait?
I got it, it's right here. I don't know what I need to plug in though, I'm not plugged into the smart board.
Plug that in, no, you gotta plug it into your.
Plug it into the smart board.
We don't.
Oh, you're gonna show it?
Plug it in here, plug it into your USB.
He shows that you've got a.
You're gonna show it, I'm gonna.
No, yes, you're gonna do sound.
So it's gonna be exactly, it's gonna be timed perfectly.
Plug it in, trust me, it'll work.
Her mouth is gonna be moving at the wrong time.
How does your timing is good?
It's like watching Channel 4.
All the time.
Not getting any sound?
I think I have it on mute for a moment.
If you wanna watch a movie, sports or anything like that or something.
It like scrambles your brain, once new people's lips move and the words aren't the right shape.
I think we should not use this and play my sound.
Are the only ones on the 205?
Yeah, could they have a contract? They have, they own the contract or?
I prefer to be on 102.
About yours, Mo?
Yeah, they could have their own contract.
I only use my computer, it's pretty loud.
Okay.
To understand the rationale and purpose of Vermont's current educa. Today, we're going to make sense out of Vermont's education funding system. To understand the rationale and purpose of Vermont's current.
Oh, it's just getting the knack.
Spending per pupil will subject to dramatically different.
Ready? It's not gonna.
Set.
There you go.
Today, we're going to make sense out of Vermont's education funding system. To understand the rationale and purpose of Vermont's current education funding system, you need to step back 20 years to 1997. At that time, communities with the same spending per pupil.
I have to make it display now, okay?
Today, we're going to make sense out of Vermont's education funding system. To understand the rationale and purpose of Vermont's current education funding system, you need to step back 20 years to 1997. At that time, communities with the same spending per pupil will subject to dramatically different tax rates. Some Vermonters filed a lawsuit and the state Supreme Court ruled in Brigham versus State of Vermont that wide disparities in tax terms due to large differences in property wealth resulted in unequal education opportunity for students based on their residence, a violation of the Vermont State Constitution. In response, Vermont's lawmakers enacted the Equal Education Opportunity Act of 1997, commonly known as Act 60. While Act 60 created school quality standards and performance requirements, the biggest change was a shift in responsibility for funding education. The state of Vermont now funds all public school district budgets approved by voters across the state. Teachers of Act Sixty attempted to equalize many factors: student population or school size, local market value of property, student demographics, and student spending. Six years later, lawmakers passed Act Sixty-eight, which modified the funding formula in hopes of simplifying the process without affecting the intent of the legislation: equal education opportunity for all of Vermont's students. Vermont pays for education through the state's education fund. There are four primary sources of money that provide the fund: revenue transferred from the state's general fund, a portion of general purpose taxes like sales and use, purchasing use, and state lottery; the non-residential education property tax, non-residential properties, any property that is not a homestead, businesses, psychones, camps, etc.; and the homestead property tax, paid by Vermont homeowners, which has two components: payments based either on property value or household income, or both. In fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, the expenses paid by the education fund totaled one point five eight billion dollars. Now, let's focus on understanding how property taxes are calculated as of fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. The first thing that happens is each district's school board begins preparing a budget in the fall for consideration by the voters at annual school district meetings, which usually happen on or around our meeting day in March. Once a budget is approved, the state is obligated to fund the district's education spending from the education fund. Education spending is the amount of budgeted expenses minus local revenue and state and federal grants, including things like special education reimbursement, transportation aid, and small school grants. Local revenue may include tuition collected, interest on investments, and surplus carryovers. The amount of education spending for each district begins its homestead tax rate calculation. Next, the district's education spending is divided by the number of equalized pupils attending the district's schools. What's an equalized pupil, you may ask? The state adjusts the number of students in a district by factors that reflect costs associated with certain demographics. High school students, for example, generally cost more to educate than elementary students, who in turn cost more than preschool students. English language learners and students from economically deprived backgrounds are weighted more heavily since their education costs are often higher. Like many of the calculations, this adjustment is made as a way to equalize the impact of dollars in each district. It's important to understand that the homestead tax rate doesn't reflect the total budget presented by the school board approved by the voters. Homestead tax rates reflect education spending per equalized pupil. In fact, current law requires that school boards present information that specifically correlates the proposed budget to education spending per equalized pupil. Education spending per equalized pupil for each district is then compared to the property dollar equivalent yield. We'll just call that the yield. It's determined by a mathematical calculation of the amount per pupil spending, supported each year by a fixed homestead tax rate of one dollar per hundred dollars of value. By way of example, if one dollar tax rate would yield spending per equalized student of ten thousand dollars and a district presents a budget that has spending per equalized pupil at fifteen thousand dollars, then that district tax rate would be a dollar fifty. But wait, there's more. The final step in determining the homestead tax rate is the state's method of equalizing property value by comparing actual sales data to assessed values in each town. The result is the common level of appraisal, or C L A, a ratio applied to the tax rate to normalize home values. Those are the components of the basic formula for calculating homestead property tax: education spending divided by the equal number of pupils divided by the yield equals the tax rate. The tax liability is calculated by dividing the homestead tax rate by the common level of appraisal and then multiplying by the assessed value divided by one hundred. Let's make some sense of this, okay? Meet Jane. She lives in St. Alden City, which is a part of the newly unified Maple Run Unified School District. She's voted in support of the school board's proposed budget, as did the majority of the voters in the district. Maple Run's fiscal year two thousand and eighteen education spending was thirty-seven million, nine hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars for two thousand five hundred twenty-seven point three equalized pupils. So, education spending per pupil was fifteen thousand, sixteen dollars and ninety-one cents. Jane and her friends approved that fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget that was forty-seven point eight percent higher than the yield of ten thousand, one hundred sixty dollars set by the legislature. As a result, their homestead property tax rate increased by that amount to one dollar and forty-seven point eight cents per one hundred dollars of assessed property value. So, what did that mean for Jane? Her house in St. Alden City was assessed for two hundred fifty-one thousand, three hundred dollars, where the Vermont Tax Department established the C L A at ninety-four point nine nine percent, meaning that the average assessed value of properties in the city that sold over the past three years was ninety-four point nine nine percent of the actual selling prices. To figure out Jane's education portion of her property tax bill, the tax rate of a dollar forty-seven point eight is divided by the C L A of ninety-four point nine nine percent then multiplied by the assessed value of the house divided by one hundred, because the tax rate is applied per hundred dollars of value. So, her education tax would be three thousand, nine hundred ten dollars and eleven cents. Jane knows that's a pretty good deal for the education her kids get at V F A. But what she can't figure out is why her brother, Dick, who lives a couple miles away on Lake Road and his kids also go to V F A, pay less in education taxes even though their house is assessed at a higher value than hers. It's assessed at two hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. The answer is that Dick lives in St. Aldenstown, which had a different C L A. So, after dividing the one dollar and forty-seven point eight cent district tax rate by the town's C L A of one hundred three point eight six percent and multiplying by his two hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars assessment divided by one hundred, his tax bill was three thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Dick and Jane know that some people pay education taxes based on income and not property value, like their parents, Barbara and Harold, who recently retired and still live in the home where they raised their kids in Fairfield. Unlike Jane or Dick and their partners, Barbara and Harold are on a fixed income that falls below the household income threshold established by law. So, their tax calculation works different. Their total household income, pensions and social security, was eighty-two thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars, below the state's household income threshold of one hundred forty-one thousand dollars. So, they qualified for a homestead tax adjustment. The base tax rate for the income sensitivity program is two percent of income. Like the property value yield we talked about for Jane, there's also an income yield. And, the tax rate still depends on what a district spends per equalized pupil. In fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, the income yield was eleven thousand, ninety-nine dollars. So, the Maple Run Unified School District per pupil spending of fifteen thousand, sixteen dollars and ninety-one cents was twenty-five point two four percent above the yield. Thus, the base rate of two percent of income was increased by the same percentage and resulted in a rate of two point five oh five percent of income. So, Barbara and Harold's tax liability is two thousand, sixty dollars and ninety-nine cents. With their assessed value of three hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred dollars and Fairfield's C L A of ninety-four point eight one percent, Barbara and Harold's tax calculation based on property value was five thousand, seventy-five dollars and eighty cents. Their annual tax bill was adjusted by three thousand, fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents to reflect their income-based tax obligation of two thousand, sixty dollars and ninety-nine cents. When looking at how these formulas get applied in your district, remember that roughly sixty-five percent of homestead property owners pay state education taxes based on their household income rather than their property values. You might want to check out whether your own household qualifies. Finally, let's look at the impact on second homeowners and businesses who are taxed at the non-residential rate. Barbara and Harold's friends, Sally and Tim, moved south when they retired, but they bought a camp right on St. Alden's Bay so they would still have their connection to Vermont, their family, and their old friends. Their four acre camp is right on the lake. This property is assessed at four hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Their tax rate, however, isn't dependent on the school district budget or spending per student. The legislature sets a uniform tax rate for all non-residential properties each year. For fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, the adjusted rate was one dollar and fifty-three point five cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. The only adjustments for Sally and Tim reflected the town's C L A, which in the case of St. Alden's Bay, was one hundred three point eight six percent. So, their effective tax rate was a dollar and forty-seven point eight cents, making their education tax liability six thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. If you saw changes about Vermont's education fund in formio, you can review the E P Qs and education tax calculation tables on the Vermont Department of Taxes website, tax.vermont.gov, or get in touch with Susan Hols, Director of Board Education Services, at the V S B A. There's no question this is a complicated way to do things, and we've only scratched the surface here. But there are three main elements within this system. The first is that the state is obligated to fund all education spending approved by voters. So, while the tax bills are distributed by the towns, all tax revenue is sent to the state's education fund. School districts receive their money from the education fund. Second, in response to concerns about rising property tax rates, the state has added cost containment features in the formula over time, such as an excess spending threshold. These features add even more complexity to the system, affecting communities that are losing students and seeing an increase in their spending per pupil. Finally, it's important to remember that although the mathematical manipulations like equalized pupils and common levels of appraisal may seem convoluted and theoretical, they are designed to ensure that every public school student in Vermont has access to equal education resources, a promising shrine in Vermont's constitution.
Actually, that was.
Then if you slow it down, if you watch it yourself, slow it down.
Yeah. Thank you, Laura.
Just let people know who are watching that, look for these things, that this isn't just a straight, cut and dry thing when you go to vote, that it's a little bit more involved.
A lot, a lot of things that go into the calculation.
Right.
Okay. Next up is the principal's report. And we're seven thirty-five and we're at eight thirty-five.
Do you want to go first, Pat?
I'm sorry? Go where I?
It's the, the thing that you might be most interested in would be the Anti-Bullying Alliance. Sorry, the thing that you might, the thing that you might be most interested in would be the Anti-Bullying Alliance. It's at its very beginning stages, and it's only got two students in it so far, but it's something we're hoping to build. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's something you can, I wanted to just some pretty decent detail there in the report. So, if you have any questions about that, please do seek me out because I think it's something that meets a need that we have, a social emotional need that we have and is an issue that affects every school. I'll lay off the rest of it, but I wanted to highlight that.
Would that happen to be on the school website?
There's nothing on the school website yet. We had our first meeting this week, so it's really in its infancy.
So, the public doesn't have access to that yet?
Do they have access to the principal's report?
Access to what, this report?
That report.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be attached to your, to your minutes. It's public record tonight.
Do you want a copy?
I can print you a copy of this report.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll do that right now. Okay. Thanks, Noah.
That's all right.
Sorry, Noah.
Can we say students' names in public? Can we say students' names in public?
Good point.
Because there's students' names written in this.
No.
No.
So, that's, that's all.
Okay, so they'll go back to it.
That's not the full name, is it?
Yeah.
It's on me, so.
But we'll only do it.
We just hand, maybe we could get it back and redact it.
It's just for us. It's just for us.
Okay.
But it won't be hard to figure out. And I think those are the only student names. What you need to.
It is nice to see this school pursuing an anti-bullying, considering the incidents that have been in the community.
Oh, yeah, they are there. Go ahead.
Uh, no, that's, that's, I'm not gonna go into more detail. There's a lot of detail there, and I'm happy to consult with you all if you have questions on that. I think the rest of these that I hit on have been touched on before. The public's in education was a great success. The Anti-Bullying Alliance came out of student interest based on that presentation.
That's great.
Chris, it looks like student names were only in that first part.
Yes, so knowing that, that these reports are attached to board minutes, I will not be putting names in future principal's reports, so, my bad.
No. No. But we, anyone here could make that mistake too. So, Pat, do you have?
Oh, wow, okay. Thanks.
Are you adding?
I am. Under, under coordinated high-quality first instruction and targeted interventions goal, we had a wonderful presentation yesterday here. We had invited Joan Lumbras and Deb Boucher, a Highgate resident, as well as Jess Peck from Swanton Elementary School. They have been doing some work around how to best provide support for all students in math and literacy, and especially providing intervention for students who are not performing at levels that they would like. Joan and, I don't know Jess as well, but I'm very familiar with Joan and Deb. They're widely respected in our school district and probably this corner of the state. We wanted to hear from them a little bit about what they've been doing that have given them, I will say, better results than we've been getting on our test scores. And it's probably a meeting that I've been trying to arrange for a while. So, my thanks to Deena and Justina, the administrators at Swanton School, for allowing her staff to come up and share with us. Just a couple of indicators that will probably be testament to how well received it was, was that it was supposed to be a twenty-minute presentation. They ended up being here for about an hour and ten minutes. Much of that was answering questions from the Highgate staff and who are very interested in a lot of the things that they've been doing. We recognize that Swanton got a little bit of a jump on this work. They've been at it for about three or four years. We have only really started last year with the, what you've heard about professional learning communities. So, and having Jen Hubbard with us now, who was at Swanton for, for many years, has really been wonderful in terms of, of letting us know that we are on the same kind of trajectory, that we are where Swanton was a couple of years ago when they first started, that we, we are in the right track, doing the right things. But it did take them, as I said, three or four years to start seeing the results that they wanted to see. And they entered, they entered into this work largely because their test scores were remaining quite flat for many years. And our, our situation here is a little bit more urgent because our test scores have not been flat, they've been falling. And so, I think there was an added sense of, of importance to what they were sharing with us. I think having Jen here as a math leader will certainly help us maybe get through to the improvement level a bit faster than Swanton did. But it was generally a wonderful, as I said, a great presentation. And our, our teachers were certainly highly engaged in what they had to hear and what they, what Joan, Deb, and Jess had to share. So, we're. So we'll start working on this on Monday, on our Insortis Day, in the afternoon, a little bit about kind of what did Swanton share that they're doing that we're not doing, and how do we actually start doing the work that they're doing? So that was, I think, a really good professional development opportunity that was free, that involved people from our own district, which I think is great. I think that there has been, again, prior to me, there was a little bit of...Reluctance isn't the right word, but I'm sure there was a reason why, but we weren't as on board with district-wide initiatives at Highgate as other schools. We've joined them in just about every initiative that we have going now, from the Marzano Framework to this work with intervention, helping kids who are not doing as well. But it is, I guess I said, going to take us a little bit of time, but it does feel good that we are sharing staff a little bit to help each other. And it also helps that Deb and Joan, again, Jess is a newer member of their team down there, but it also helps that, you know, Joan and Deb have been doing this both over thirty years, all within our district, and so they're widely respected. It's not to say we don't have our own talent here at school. We do. But sometimes it's nice just to hear what other schools are doing and being successful. So it was a pretty good meeting and a pretty good presentation.
I'm really glad that we're having more of this sharing between the schools.
Yep.
Because if the school is doing something right and well, why reinvent the wheel? Why don't you just go and see what's going on?
Yeah, it felt great.
That's great.
You know, I know we've talked about this before, about Franklin does things, they're having good results, why are we not communicating with their? Swanton is now having great results. We all share the same kids. There's no huge shift or change in our demographics, so there's no reason why we shouldn't be performing as well as other schools in our district and across the state.
I'd just like to commend Pat for that reach-out. And again, it's part of what we identified in Act forty-six, is that we act merged, we stay local, and we do lots of collaboration, and that's another example of how we can benefit all sides.
We do have, as I just mentioned a few minutes ago, we have a Professional Development Day coming up on Monday. The first half is implementing what is most commonly known as Restorative Circles, and I won't...I'll try to be brief on this, but this comes from the best institute that I attended with a team from Highgate in the summer. And basically, if you consider that over fifty percent of the staff, and now over half of our classroom teachers, have been hired in the last two years, we're a very different place than we were even just a few years ago. And one of the concerns that I have heard from the staff is our intraschool communications, communicating with each other in the building. We have people that don't, sometimes don't even know somebody that they're working with. And so one of the ideas that I thought was, if we want to get back to that time and place in Highgate where there wasn't a lot of turnover and people were staying and people did know each other, that we have to kind of restore that ability to communicate. And so Restorative Circles is really...How it basically works is we have ten circle keepers. They all happen to be on our continuous improvement team, and they all have a group made up of teachers, parent educators, front office staff, behavior specialists, so it's a cross-section. So every group has a little bit of everything. And it's basically a way for the continuous improvement team to hear what people are thinking and for them to hear what we're trying to do to improve our school. So it will result in a monthly meeting where the same group of people get together with the same leaders, and they talk about what do we need to be doing to keep improving as a school. So that happens Monday. You're all welcome, if possible at all, to come and attend. We are the first school to be using this in our district, and we do have a number of guests from other schools coming to see how this works. And it is also something that we are hopefully looking to, if it goes well, to introduce to our students in the fall. And...But again, the idea is Restorative Circles, that it is just a way for everyone, regardless of their position in the school, to be heard. And so we want to hear from parent educators, we want to hear from front office staff, we want to hear from behaviors, we want to hear from classroom teachers who teach the youngest kids, who teach the oldest kids, but it's really just a way to build community again at Highgate. And again, you know, over fifty percent of the people in our building have been hired in the last two years. So when we come together for a big staff meeting, there isn't necessarily a lot of common...People don't look around and feel like they know each other, and so it's something that has been voiced to me as a concern as a staff, that email's great, but, you know, being together face-to-face. So we have a woman who's doing the training. Her name is Annie O'Shaughnessy, and she has actually had some of our teachers as students in summer programs. Marilyn McSweeney, Kelly Heinlein, and Monica Sweet have all taken classes with her. She came highly recommended, so we're excited. It'll be interesting, and if you would all, if you're at all interested in seeing what we're doing, you know, Monday morning would be the time. I know it's a workday for most everyone, so it's hard, but you're all welcome. That afternoon, we'll be doing a number of other things. We are going to start it off, by the way, with a wellness breakfast. Luanne Collins has returned as our wellness liaison, and she's doing a great job at getting us all together, drinking water, eating healthier. So thanks to Luanne for returning to that position. We're going to be doing more on videotaping teachers and their own goals. All teachers, not the ones that are just under in their first two years, but all teachers being videotaped. That will happen on Monday as well. And then the other part on Monday, which I did not mention in the principals' report, is teachers will be actually going online to do the S-Back testing themselves. We are really, really trying to get at why are we not performing better at S-Backs? And part of that, we're not really leaving any stone unturned, and so for an hour on Monday, teachers will be going in and taking the actual tests themselves, the demonstration test. Some of our S-Back team is working with third graders right now. I mean, it sounds simple, but, you know, when you take this test, you've got to be able to scroll on a touchpad, and we've got some third graders that don't know how to scroll on a touchpad, especially when they come out of K-2, when everything they were doing is touchscreen. And all of a sudden, they've got to use, you know, the touchpad where to scroll. So they don't even...Some of them don't even necessarily...Now, we don't know if that...how much it impacts the testing or not, but again, we're trying to discover every base possible to make sure that we're doing the best we can with students, that they'll know that it won't be the logistics of an actual computer that hurt test scores, that we really want it just to be left to be truly a measure of what they know and how successful we've been at teaching them. So that's our Monday. And then I'm going to scroll down. The Authentic Shared Leadership is, again, that's our continuous improvement team that is going to be working with our staff. So that's kind of about it. We're in the midst of our ski program. Tomorrow is our first day. It's been canceled because it's a hundred percent chance of rain.
Can I say something to that?
I'm sorry?
This is from a parent's standpoint, because I do have a student in that program. The communication that needs to improve greatly.
About the cancellation?
Well, it was canceled, then it was scheduled for today, and then today was canceled. And supposedly, letters went home with fifth graders, but no, it was sixth graders, so there's a lot of disparity.
Good to know.
So some attention to that would be great.
All right. And then lastly, we're trying to also look at a return of our Winter Carnival, which used to be, I think, run pretty much by John Lumston, but hasn't happened since then, and so we're hoping to bring...
It didn't happen last year.
Well, we didn't have snow. Snow didn't, yeah.
But you did it indoors. The last couple of years that I was part of it anyway, it was all indoors. There was very little outdoors, with the exception of maybe skating.
There was a rainbow right here in this library. Oh, no, I'm kidding, I'm not kidding.
Yeah.
It was right there.
So, anyway. And then, of course, you met Jordan, and that was...Obviously, was a...Much of my work over the break was hiring, and as I may have noted, got help from Chris. Tanya and Ernie and Emily Wright also all came in on the Christmas break time to help do interviews and meet with candidates. So that was what allowed us to move as quickly as we did in securing that position to start with the second semester, if you will.
Just to reinforce one of the issues, we reach out to other districts for leadership, and other districts also reach out to Highgate. MVU is interested in Pat's pioneering work around the swivel technology, which a teacher puts on a lanyard, the iPad follows wherever the teacher is moving, whoever the teacher is talking with or working directly with students, and it's a way for authentic feedback that when the administrator sits down with the teacher, they're able to actually see what's happening rather than just read about it. And an administrator can point to a particular area where a teacher either is doing really well or needs to improve, and we're just in the process of getting a swivel system at MVU for the teacher that I'm working with on corrective action, and that's how we'll start it, and eventually move that into all teachers as well. So compliments to Highgate. Again, it's a sharing relationship across the SU.
Okay?
I am, thank you.
Questions for Pat? Okay. Principals' report, superintendents' report.
I had the opportunity to attend the Governor's Education Summit. It was about three hundred and twenty-five people. You might have seen articles in The Messenger about it. I don't always agree with legislators and the governor, but I will have to give credit where credit is due. The governor put together a fine series of panels and stayed the whole day at Norwich University and listened to what people had to say. And there were stakeholders from not just schools, but also businesses and organizations, the Vermont Department of Health, the Vermont Department of Education, Agency of Ed. It was well done, and I felt like it was worthwhile. I'm going to share a little bit, just an overview. If...I just start with a question. Are you all getting the education legislative report?
I am.
Okay. So I'm just going to give you some highlights, and also maybe some folks from home. Key...No, David. Key issues. The one thing that I heard at the Governor's Summit that I'm pleased about, that has been running us ragged, and that is that when Act 166, the early ed law educating children ages three and four, for two years, we've double-done the criminal record background checks. The Agency of Human Services and the Agency of Education both had to do those background checks, and it was ludicrous. Finally worked that out, and they presented at the Governor's Summit that the Agency of Education is now responsible for all employees in schools, and the Agency of Human Services is responsible for all background checks for employees in private daycares. And so that's been separated. That was one of the best outcomes out of that.
When are there other duplicative things between preschool and schools?
Not to the extent that that was. And so there's a report out. I'll send that to you. The materials that were distributed that day, I'll send to you electronically so you can see the other kinds of recommendations. That report's going to Legislature from the summer work and fall work that Human Services and Education worked on together.
Thank you.
The new special ed report is focused on instructional support for struggling learners. I'll send you a copy of that as well.
So Mr. Levinson has made his way back into the Vermont...
He never left.
The hills of Vermont.
He never left. School health benefits. The findings were that the savings were not as great as what the governor had hoped. He caused Legislature to extract eight-point-four million dollars from the savings that local school boards realized and strive for in the implementation of the new healthcare plans. Last year, we had to give back or not receive from the state sixty-five percent of that eight-point-four mil, and out of FY nineteen will be thirty-five percent. For Highgate, I don't remember the exact amount.
I was going to ask you.
It's on your revenue report?
Yeah.
Twelve thousand one seventy-one is thirty-five percent.
Twelve thousand...
One seventy-one.
One seventy-one.
And I'll just say, as complimentary as I was of the governor, I am not complimentary of the burgeoning impact we have on the retirement funds that are extracted from every new hire that we have every year they're employed with us. And we're now looking at two-hundred thousand dollars this year in either funds we have to pay to the tune of about twelve-hundred dollars per...
Thirteen-something now.
Thirteen-something now per new teacher every year, paid into teacher's retirement for the increases in healthcare expenses. That previously was taken directly out of the ed fund. It did not impact your tax rate directly because it came out of the pot before the funds ever came here or before that was ever incorporated within the calculations, and that's going to be more next year. Any federal grants we get off the top, what's that percentage?
Fourteen percent.
Fourteen percent is carved off the top of any federal grants, any of our title grants for retirement. And so we...As we're in a shared governance model with the state and with locals, but these kinds of decisions that are being made and yet holding our feet to the fire while we have little control over some of those unfunded mandates is a piece of what I would encourage you, as Legislature continues to create new bills, to...I'll keep you apprised of what some of the impacts are. Sometimes we don't know till it's all over, and sometimes legislators don't know till it's all over. In conversations with legislators, many of them didn't understand what some of these impacts were. So that's why it's very important to reach out to them and to continue to be in the know. We've already talked about the homestead property tax rate, so I'm going to skip over that. And I'm going to skip over that because we've talked about it as well. The marijuana legalization, the impact to us is this Marijuana Commission is looking at the impact on children and on highway safety. They haven't finished the job. They'll finish it...They're touted to finish it in December. The problem is, if this is passed the way that it's on fast track right now, it'll go into effect July one. And so keep listening and paying attention to legislation on this, because it sets a standard and a precedent for the acceptance of this in our state, and it's a modeling for our kids. I'm going to try to keep my biases out of it, but I don't see any benefit here when we've had smoking cessation programs for many, many decades, and now we're promoting smoking of something else that has just as many, if not more, chemicals than what we're trying to keep children away from. So that will have impact. The other notable bills, and they're always at the bottom. The other notable bills, and they're always at the bottom. You can see that childhood trauma for a number of years is... I'm pleased that the legislator, George Till, used to be a school board member in the Chittenden East District. He may still be a school board member. He's a doctor, and he's very much behind childhood trauma. So that's a good bill, and we need to continue to pay attention to that. Last thing that I'll share with you. You may remember in the Act 46 report, we have foreign student recruitment process. In particular, a team of administrators and myself went to Montpelier this week and met with the Spiral International Group, which you've heard me speak about before. They are interested in having four administrators travel to China in March. Compliments of the Chinese government and the Spiral International Group. And there's no money that comes out of school district other than $260 of the professional development funds that administrators have that covers the visa to be able to have, to make that trip. And that, the intent of this is to recruit students to come to our schools, starting at the high school and maybe middle school level. One of our models is Otter Valley Union School in Brandon. Next January, they're bringing in 10 students from China. And they're also bringing in a Mandarin Chinese teacher on a grant. Both are no cost to Otter Valley. And the students will be coming in at about $16,000 a student that are paid for by China. And it's really a revenue generator that offsets the declining enrollment that all schools are experiencing. And I was surprised to hear at this meeting that there's going to be a legislative bill introduced that over the next 10 years, as it stands now, will be looking to bring in 10,000 Chinese students to generate some substantial revenue to the tune of $350 to $450 million to help schools offset the impact of declining enrollment. And they are looking at the metrics of how much money that actually drops into our economy outside of schools. So again, that's a strategy for being able to maintain our programs, to continue the revenue streams. And the part that I'll finish with is the Crasberg example. Crasberg Academy has 160 students. They had pretty substantial ed spending per equalized pupil. They brought in eight students from China. Last year, they dropped their ed spending by $3,000 a student. So revenue streams, even our five students that were up this year, had a pretty substantial impact on our bottom line budget and ed spending. This is a strategy that the state realizes as we are the second oldest state in Vermont in the U.S. and soon to be, if the trend continues, the oldest state in the U.S., that we need more students.
You're talking about it, Stephen.
Present company accepted?
Definitely.
Okay.
What does this company that is footing for the bill for this, are they an NGO?
No, they're a limited, let me think. They're an LLC. I asked that question because you would ask me to do some checking out here. It's a federal, it's like the nonprofit organizations, except they are a low-profit organization. The nonprofits are 501(c)(3)'s, 501(c)(6)'s. The c6's can actually lobby legislative bodies, the c3's can't. An example is the Vermont School Boards Association is a 501(c)(3). I don't know the parameters on these low-profit organizations. But I'll tell you that the funding is not coming from the U.S. There's a very strong interest from the Chinese government and the Chinese Education Bureau to have student, and families, to have students come to the United States. And the contributing issue is to come here for a year, likely as a senior, and stay here and go to college. And there's a strong interest here. The governor is very much prioritizing both early education and post-secondary education. So this fits with the governor's prioritization of that sector of education. So it aligns really well. And it's an idea that a few schools have had. And now, it sounds like Montpelier is interested in doing more of it and doing it on a larger scale. And again, these students would be living in private homes. There would be funding for host families. So it's different than exchange programs. In the past, exchange programs, no money changed hands. Families just opened their homes, and they paid whatever the freight was. On a scale like this, this is part of where the $350 million would come into play. So that's my legislative report.
Okay. Old business. We're going to add down here at the end of this. Mark. Okay?
Does the board have any more questions for Laura?
I'm just going to listen to the roof thing.
Okay.
There's not much to...
Oh, not much, okay. And I just need the warrants of...
Oh, okay. I haven't signed all the warrants on the inside yet. There are a lot of them.
You shouldn't have to sign. They should already be signed, no?
No, they aren't.
I can wait, just, I'm fine.
Why don't I just take them down there tomorrow morning?
You sure?
Yeah. I don't mind. Is that okay?
It's absolutely fine if you want to make the trip, or I can wait. Thank you.
Well, I can bring them.
Yeah. Thank you, Laura, very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Generator, Mr. Roddy.
Yes, ma'am. Well, as everybody knows, we need a generator for the white building. Because we are emergency sheltered. And so in a way, we're looking into a generator. I found two. One is Mr. Brissette's. They bought out the turkey farm or the chicken farm up here.
That's taken care of.
That is taken care of. So it's marked out, what do you mean, taken care of?
MBU's got that.
We didn't work fast enough. They bought that?
Yeah.
Are they going to become the emergency shelter?
I mean, any school would be...
We'll send everybody down there.
Well, it's okay. A good share of MBU's in Harvey, so they're okay.
We do have a generator for the brick building. We don't have one for the white building. Oh, by the way, our well is connected to the white building. So if something happens, we just don't have any water. And if it's really cold, the white building will freeze up.
Well, because the library was now frozen up.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Dave, why can't we get a grant for that?
I've been working with Heidi for grants. And few and far between. As a matter of fact, there's none for right now. Imagine that? I thought, sure.
You can get grants for sidewalks, but we can't get a grant for a generator for an emergency shelter.
Well, if we walk that sidewalk a lot, we'll be warm, but anyway. Yeah, isn't that something? I know it's up.
We got our priorities straight.
I was, I wasn't discussing as you were. So I got one online. It's a Generac commercial. It's similar to the one from Brissette. 480 volts and all this. And that's around $30,000, free shipping.
Free shipping?
Yeah, pretty good. Trouble is, then, you'd have to hire somebody to hook it up, and we'd have to buy the switch, and, yeah.
And I'll just say that the first one that David is talking about, we've done some analysis on what the switchgear needs to be to be able to connect that into the electrical grid. And it's about the same cost for the generator, maybe a little bit more.
Right.
And you can double it with the electrical connection that you need to be able to bring in three-phase electrical panel.
And the Brissette's come with all of that?
Yeah. Well, some of it, some of it works and some of it doesn't.
Well, it's set around.
Yeah, I know.
So anyway, that's all I got for the generator. I hope we continue to work on it as long as, until March, anyway.
Okay.
Then I won't be on the board to work on it, so.
Roof bid update?
There's not much of an update. Terry had put together a meeting with two contractors on the 5th, which was the snow day. Only one showed up. Tried to be late, too, but whatever. So he's, he looked at the roof. He's going to give me a bid this coming week. Terry's reaching out to two more contractors, hoping we get one more to show up, so we'll have three bids. And with any luck, everything goes right, I'll have all bids ready for next meeting.
Thank you. David, parking lot water update. Stormwater retention pond.
I don't have anything on that.
Okay. So we need someone to be...
Was I supposed to?
Someone to be talking with. Well, for people who don't know, we are looking at, again, the problem with the water is, where do you put it? That's the problem. And so, we've looked at numerous solutions, and they have pluses and they have minuses. And I think the one now that we are looking at, probably should have looked at it before, but we didn't. So, you know, we're going to do it now, is to be able to pump the water on the other side of what was the railroad tracks into some property over there. And we have, I mean, we talked about pumping it way over to the school-owned Cassidy property. We have a long way to pump it. Lots of things could go wrong. But on the other side of the railroad tracks, that's not so bad. So we are in the infant stages of looking at doing that and putting a retention pond over there and pumping the water over there.
I'd be more than happy to get with the landlord and set up a meeting.
Okay.
Come to a school board meeting, or be a special...
I should do some talking first with him. Okay?
Got it.
And...
Tell him we'll give him 300 pulkens a year.
Wow. That's impressive. He'll feed the cows.
Okay, so...
That's the other thing. Was there any grants available for that?
We've been applying.
Yeah. We applied for, through the Regional Planning Commission.
For rain gardens.
Right.
And the Lake Champlain Basin Organization. We didn't get funded. We were told there was a very promising footprint that had a lot of, it's really a three-acre parcel here.
Right.
When you count the roofs and the parking lots. And we're going to go at it again, so.
Maybe you can include a generator in there, pump that water in.
Well, that's a good idea.
How about that for creativity?
I like it.
Yeah. We'll think about that.
Yeah, that'd be tough. Yeah, because, yeah, we'd have to, the pump would have to be pumping the water out while we have electricity to bring the water in.
I'll have to make sure to pick it up.
Hey, yep.
Okay. Board vacancies. Noah's term is up. David's term is up. And Connie is resigning the day after town meeting day. There are two years left on my term. Mark.
And I apologize for not coming earlier. All right, I didn't realize that your board meetings started at 6:30 in public.
Comments were there.
Comments were at 6:30. My concern, Connie, is about our petition that was put in that ended up being late. All right? And you remember the meeting we had here? And there was all kinds of praise and happiness. And we got together quite a large gathering in this school building...
We did.
To vote on, to vote that we wanted to stay the way we were. And we left it in our superintendent's hands to get that petition turned in on time. And it didn't happen. So there are going to be consequences. I just get a feeling, I'm listening to the vibe here, and we're talking real heavily about Act 46. Doesn't sound like there's too much discussion about the way we want to go. For starters.
Okay.
Well, I'm not getting that anyways out of this. Another piece of that, which I picked up from a meeting in Franklin, was something to do with the supervisor reunion taking over the school funding versus town treasurers. There's some discrepancy there. Have you heard anything of this? And have you had any...
That is not an issue in Highgate. Highgate has had a very amicable relationship between our school treasurer and the person who does our bills. We've been doing that, but that's for a really long time.
For what? You've been doing what?
We have been, the bills have been processed by the accountant that is in the employee of the school board. And then it is passed by the town treasurer. The town treasurer looks at the things, goes down, picks up checks, all those sorts of things, okay? And so, and we've been doing that since at least the 80's. Okay? So that has not been a problem for us. Okay, so there's that.
That's not taking away responsibilities from the town treasurer?
Well, we've been doing it for over three decades.
Yes. I think what happened in Highgate's situation is that the town clerk relinquished them those duties because Sue Day, right, is the person that does the accounting. Because I had asked Shelley. And Shelley does...
But we had people before that.
Right.
Okay? When I was on the board in the mid-'80's, our bill, the accounting part of it, was done out of the superintendent's office since 1. Okay? And then, when the work for that person got too much, then we, the board, went out and got like a Sue Day. Okay? And then, and then after that, I wasn't on the board anymore. So I'm not sure when Sue Day came, but...
In Franklin, it's a little bit different setup.
Right. And so, and so, but what I'm saying is, it's not germane to our conversation. That's what I'm saying. And that's what you asked about. Is that an issue with us? Well, it's been something we've been doing for a really long time. And my theory is, if it's not broken, don't fix it.
Back to the original question. So there's no concern with this board about that petition being turned in late? Yes, no?
I have heard, I have heard an explanation. I have asked questions. I've been in meetings where it's been talked about. Ideally, that, okay. But it wasn't. However, before it was turned in late, there was a conversation with the Agency of Education about when the paperwork should go. At that point in time, we were talking about going to the State Board of Education, or December or January. And the response from the Agency of Education was, and I don't know the timeline between that and what they put in a new schedule for the amended governance structures. But the Agency of Education responded that you missed it, it's not going to affect, it will not have a negative effect on what you're going to do. And quite frankly, regardless of whether it was in time or not in time, the Agency of Education, the State Board of Education, will do whatever they want with us.
What was that meeting for then, Connie? What was that false pretense for? Thinking that we stood a snowball's chance in hell of accomplishing what we're looking for?
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to respond to that, and then we're going to move on, okay?
Okay.
Although, you can respond to what I say. We had that vote to give our application more authenticity that it wasn't just antecdotally that we knew that our townspeople didn't want it. Okay? But we needed to have some hard evidence. And so, by having that vote, that gave us the hard evidence that we needed. Okay? So... No, I don't think that was, I think that was an absolutely right thing to do, to have that, have that vote and to do that. No, I don't think that was, I think that was an absolutely right thing to do, to have that, have that vote and to do that.
I guess we'll leave it at that.
David, I just happened to think something. What about, in municipality, has the ability to go on to, like, military surplus sites?
Yeah, I looked on that, no.
Did you? Okay. I wondered if maybe that might be an option for the school.
So, we, we, at, earlier in my seven years of being on the board, Heidi and I looked at, Heidi found one.
Right.
It was used military, and I think it was in Korea, and we had to pay for the shipping.
So, what I found was in the Philippines.
Oh, no.
Unless Zep and I go over and get it.
Where?
Philippines.
The... I'm sure we can find some funding for that, David.
Albert, their sewer treatment plant.
Yeah?
The gentleman who runs that has gotten a lot of things through that service within the New England area. So, maybe he has a trick.
Yeah.
Be worth a phone call, I could certainly reach out to him if you'd like.
Sure, appreciate it.
Yeah, maybe could arrange something.
Yeah.
In, in the interim, whether the, the fire department's generators could help you at all, in the case of uncertainty, might be something to, to plan on.
We'd have to do some fancy wiring, especially.
Well, I, I, I think events in our country has said that, I mean, we've been kicking this can down for a really long time. And I think it, and we had to use the school one year for a shelter. And so, I think that, I, I think we're in trouble if we don't do something about it. New business.
Thank you very much for your time, Connie.
You're welcome, thank you.
School board, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teacher professional leave during school hours.
I would say that this is on here, the board a couple of times has asked about the practice of having teachers participate in professional development activities during school time.
That was asked to be on the February agenda.
Pardon?
I asked for that to be on the February agenda, not the January agenda.
So, you wanna table it for now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the teacher professional leave during school hours is tabled to February.
Can we release then Pat and Chris?
Well, I think we can. And is it the time we're supposed, no, we're a little late, we're 10 minutes late from the time we were supposed to be done. So, yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat and Chris.
Thank you all.
Thank you. It's good to hear about the good things happening here at Highgate. And kudos to both of you guys. Okay.
The guys don't have to leave.
The budget meeting.
Not for a little bit.
Sharon, you guys know when you're having your information meeting?
We don't, yeah. We have one single item left on the budget before we finalize.
Okay, are you, are you thinking, I mean, there've been a couple of years when we've done it together.
Yeah.
I think last year we did it separate, and we each had a good group.
Yeah. Whichever you prefer.
Well, what is, what's the, what's the town's pleasure?
We have a particular issue that we need to, to spend some in-depth time with.
Okay.
For the Mississippi Valley Rescue Board Order. So, it might be better to do them separate this year because of that issue, because it's gonna be a, a pretty hot topic. But if you would like to do it together, we'll arrange it, but otherwise, see, I would say probably this year would be best to do it separately.
I would agree for separate this year, too, because we still have Act 46 on our plate, so...
Yes, yeah.
Definitely. And I think they both have potential to be hot topics.
Why don't we schedule ours now, so that you know when that's gonna be, and then we don't accidentally duplicate it.
But, but we need to have some, yeah, I don't know if we have everybody here who can, that we need to make that decision.
Well, I can tell you that you also have some other school districts that you're competing with.
Oh, yes, and you know what? Whenever we compete with SU staff, we always get you last. Except for last, except for last March vacation, when we had you first and for quite a while.
Yeah, no, no, I'm talking, I'm talking the information meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I came here first.
Can we just have it at the beginning of our February board meeting?
Do, do you not do an info meeting prior to town meeting?
Yes, we do.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I know, I confused you with March.
Since we're not, it's during March vacation. Since we don't do Australian ballot, we're not required to have it within 10 days of the vote, could we do it on February 8th? That's our regular meeting. Just do it at the beginning.
Okay, well, if we do it on February 8th, then we're not gonna have an early education presentation.
And we're not gonna have the PD during school time.
You know, we've talked about not always having a lot of people here. Do you wanna try having it on a Saturday afternoon?
You know, very well, might get more parents or, or folks that don't, you know, don't have to work that morning or whatever. Might be worth a try.
What weekend?
I, 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 I don't know that we necessarily need to do it then, I was, I've just thought about that before at other times, and it's like, okay, maybe something we should try.
Well, I, I would think morning would be better than afternoon, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Why not? Let's give it a try. How do we get loose?
Yeah, we're still having to go to...
The four or five people that show up, you know what?
Well, last year we had more than four or five.
Like the 20th?
And last year you had more than four or five. What?
I have plans for the 10th and the 17th. Or definitely the 10th, maybe the 17th, so...
Okay, and the 20th?
And I won't know that until the 11th, about the 17th.
And the 24th is the first day of school vacation.
Yeah.
I think you're rolling the dice on the 24th, people traveling.
The 3rd?
That's too early.
Friday night?
No, that's too early to get everything ready by...
How about Friday night?
Oh, Friday night, oh. Like the 9th or the 16th? 16th is the Chinese New Year.
Oh, I must have planned that. He always does, Chinese New Year, he's always...
But if we do it at night, that's kind of, we're not doing it during the day.
Sunday morning, 8 o'clock?
I don't think you're gonna get much during vacation, but...
No, because the MVU meeting, they always have theirs during vacation, because it's Australian ballot, and they've had more people than other times with it. For the number of people who should be there, it's, it's, it's pretty small.
So, basically, weekends are out, so we're back to doing it during the week.
Yep.
I mean, if the 10th worked, you could do it that, I mean, that's our state hockey weekend, where we have our... And it's here.
Oh, no, then we don't wanna do it now, because parking will be a disaster.
Oh.
It's like...
That, if we don't wanna compete with hockey, 'cause we'll definitely lose.
Right.
Good point.
Well, I could maybe miss, but...
No, no, I'm not saying you, I'm saying we'd be competing with hockey, so people that are with their children at hockey won't be able to attend this meeting.
Okay, so our board meeting is on the 8th.
Are there any basketball tournaments either? Don't they do?
Not, not, well, not, not the varsity teams, that's too early.
I was thinking elementary, don't they sometimes do those? I don't know what they call them.
Scrimmage?
Yeah, well, like, well, like a tournament where they have all the teams come.
If you do it at your February 8th board meeting, you're gonna have a camera here. I think cameras probably get a little scarce, Jerry, during that time, because lots of sounds are having, although that's probably early enough, so that's not a, not an issue.
I was gonna say, what about the 3rd? If you want, if you're interested in a Saturday morning. Will, when will the town report come out?
Yeah, yes.
Won't be out then.
It will not be out then.
I thought it was getting done early this year.
Well, we haven't got, we're getting our stuff here.
Yeah, I think people don't really start thinking about town meeting and budget votes until you get pretty close to town meeting.
See, I'm kinda nervous having it at our board meeting for the same reason, 'cause it's so far away from actual town meeting day.
So...
I'm kinda thinking we need to be in the week of the 12th and 17th, somewhere in there.
Well, we could do it the week of the 19th, because the kids are still in school.
Yeah.
Do you have board meetings?
Tuesday, I have Franklin board meeting.
I thought they were going to on Monday. Or is that their information meeting?
No, that's, that's their usual.
Patrick Lewis was my good pen.
Oh, my God.
Do you want my good pencil?
Probably jazzing down.
No.
Do you wanna go Thursday the 22nd, so that you stay with your Thursday board meeting days?
Do you have, do you, are there any board meetings?
I'm open.
Give him a shot.
Okay, what do you, what do you say, guys, the 22nd?
Works for me.
Sure.
And I don't know about, it's Thursday, I don't know if Richard has ballgames or not. I'm assuming that's why he's not here tonight. Did he talk to you? He didn't call me. Didn't email me. I'll assume it was the 22nd.
What time?
We usually do it at 7:00.
7:00. 7:00 is good. Richard tries to stay consistent.
We just need to make sure, to put it on the calendar, because they're doing, I'm guessing they're gonna be doing Winter Carnival week that week. So, we don't wanna, I don't know if they have any...
Sometimes they do it when they come back from vacation. 'Cause it's a three-day week?
Oh, that's a good point. I think they have conferences and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if we just go out and buy the, the switch and do all the wiring in the white building? And then if there's a disaster, we can borrow a part of, you know, the generator. That would save us the expensive buying one.
Well, I mean, it's certainly an option. I don't see why Joe wouldn't be partial to that, because, you know, I'm sure that some of the volunteers would come to the shelter, you know?
Oh, yeah.
In a heartbeat.
Yeah.
So, is the wiring, so I know nothing is out wiring. So, is the wiring for that, is, does it require different wiring depending on the kind of generator you have?
It does, depends on what you power out.
Water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we also have to have a switch, where if you lose the main power, this automatically switches over to the auxiliary power.
So, it's just doing the heat and the water.
Pardon?
So, oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, this...
I, I got a question, just 'cause I have no idea what the fire department's generator is.
Is it mobile?
Yes.
Okay.
Mobile.
Yeah, they're, they're...
So, it's not like ours, we're sitting on a Smith?
Right, yeah. It'd be a smaller power unit, but...
Right.
If the issue were water...
Just water pump and the heat?
Right, I mean, it would, could certainly put a truck there and, and run it off the truck's generator. Yeah, I don't think you have a, a large power drop or...
No, just be a furnace and, and the, and the pump?
Yeah, I mean, I could certainly broach it with the fire department.
That's a very good idea. You don't have to worry about your switchgear, because that's gonna be done manually, so it's just a matter of connecting.
Right.
And not automatic start, 'cause your automatic starts are weather expensive.
That's right, exactly. If something happens, and then when the power comes back on, it's supposed to shut her down.
So, we could put a manual in there?
You could do a manual and then control it yourself. That'd be the most practical money-wise.
You know, and you could have the training with both school staff, the American Red Cross, and the fire department. So that somebody would have the knowledge of what to do, when to do it.
We need to have multiple people have that knowledge.
Yes, yes.
Exactly. Put them all in here.
I mean, it just...
Which probably is true about the one that we have, and I don't know if the one that we have here, if anybody other than school people know about that one.
Well, that's automatic.
That's automatic.
Yeah, it is, but there was one time when it blew everything.
Breakers and stuff?
Computers, lights.
It's a thought, you know, to, to use the town's resources, you know, for...
Well, it's our community, so, it fits, you know?
Just I've been fond enough, 'cause I really wanna get, get that problem taken care of, and...
Good for us all to work together anyway.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Stay connected, we're pretty much doing.
It's nice to have you here tonight.
Yeah, it is.
We're interested in what's going on as well. We're learning every day.
It is nice to have you here, 'cause prior, it was, when's the school board coming over to the select board meeting?
I, I would come more to your meetings, but you are on the same time.
Yes.
With zoning, but, but this month there's no zoning, so, I'm like, okay.
And I wanna comment that you guys are doing a great job, the select...
Yeah.
Really thankful for that.
Congratulations on your messenger award.
Oh, thank you, it was unexpected. Unexpected.
Those are the best ones.
Well, it was just was surprising. You know, we all try to do the best we can, and hopefully, you know...
It's a tough job for anybody.
Yeah.
Same.
A little different than what you thought?
No, not really. It's just, uh, there's a lot involved, a lot of need and stuff in between, but...
Takes longer than you thought.
Yeah.
You thought government was fast.
Well, trying to get it to move along, that's all.
Did we fool you?
So, we're doing it already on our committee, then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had numerous things we're involved in, and we're happy to be a plug in to our community that way. Make town, how you grow. That's a good thing, definitely.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, I'm just blown away by the Chinese student thing.
Yeah, I kinda was, that was different.
Yeah, that's really, kinda off the... Sorry, the only thing I can think of is you're buying these children so that you can get a better deal on your taxes.
Were you talking?
I'm like, oh, my God.
Human trafficking?
Yeah.
Well, we didn't wanna say it that way, did we?
I thought I would.
How'd you brought it up?
Okay, yes, the camera is on.
We work on it, wondering about that.
Okay, let's get to business here. Okay, the information meeting is February 22nd, it's 7 o'clock here in the library. You guys want our library for your meeting?
See, I'm, I'm very hopeful.
You want the gym?
I'm looking like, wow, we need lots of room. Uh, but we'll have, you know, lots of stuff to turn out, but, um... I don't see why we couldn't use the library, I think that would be a lovely space.
Okay, so just let us know when your date is, and we'll...
We'll do that. I should know Thursday, next week.
Okay. Now...
Do we need an executive session?
We just got a couple of meeting dates, and then we...
Well, no, no, we, we added something about a policy regarding fundraising and, before you were here, and so...
Oh, you didn't hear Laura answer you?
Uh-huh. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I asked if you heard what Laura said about that.
Oh, yes, that, but, but we need, we don't have a policy, we need a policy. Um, and so, Highgate would like, well, I, because of concerns we've had, Highgate would like, would we like to get that process started about developing that policy? Just to encourage the SU to get on the stick and get that done.
I've got it for the February agenda.
Well, is that okay with you?
It's fine with me.
Okay with you? Okay with you?
I did talk to Laura about it, it is on there, it's high on their priority list.
Oh, good. Well, here's another one.
It's something that was brought up during their annual audit this year. Their audit was more focused on policies and procedures and following state statutes. And so, that was one policy, fiscal management and, no, risk management, and is it just fiscal something?
We got management, yeah, we got money management.
But she did say as how they have someone on staff who's very good with writing up policies, and that this was very high on their priority list.
Well, I'm sure that the Vermont School Board Association must have a policy in their...
Yeah. Their models.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, so how does that work? The, because it's a fiscal and a risk management policy, it's a policy that, does it need to be adopted by the SU board before it's brought to the local level?
Technically, it's not adopted by the SU board, the SU board generates it.
No.
Well, yes, they do, a committee from the SU will do the draft, and once that committee agrees to that policy through the SU board, then it goes back to each local district for ratification.
Well, why does it do that? Because there are...
But this is fiscal.
We have no Highgate policies. The policies for Highgate are the Franklin Northwest, as are for Swanton, Sheldon, Franklin, and MVU.
Yeah, but only municipalities can adopt policies, and the SU is not a municipality.
Okay.
So it gets developed at the SU level, agreed upon, and then as a formality, goes back for ratification from each of the boards.
Is that a state law? Is that something the state set up?
Yeah.
So the state set up that all fiscal responsibility is handled by the SU, yet you cannot have any policies on it? That is backwards.
No.
And I'm not frustrated with you, I'm just, it, doesn't that seem like you're putting the cart before the horse? You're saying you're in charge of all the money, but we're giving you no rules to follow. We're gonna give them to the people who give you the money.
We'll get back to you. Moving on, we got two more meeting dates, and then we go executive session.
Okay, um, but would that policy, it needs to be, include if, if school personnel are running it, if a school organizations are running it, if independent organizations are running it, or if independent people are doing that, or it, so it needs to have all of those things. Please and thank you.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, two more dates.
Highgate, the next board meeting is February 8th, 6:30, and the SU board is February 7th. Just a reminder that February 7th is at MVU, and that's when the final interviews for the new superintendent will be happening, and I will not be attending that meeting, or hopefully be having, well, or hopefully be happening, yes.
You're not attending any of the meeting?
I'll probably be, I don't know, probably not.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, well, it depends on what the agenda is, so, but that'll be the primary focus will, will be for interviews, and...
Do you have a meeting for, or a date for your info meeting for the SU, or MVU budget?
Uh, I think we do.
The MVU budget's usually during vacation week.
Yeah, and I think we have that scheduled, uh, maybe not.
Well, they have to, because they're, because it's Australian ballot, they've got that 10-day window.
I don't think we've scheduled that yet, I can tell you that it's not gonna be the 26th, and it's not gonna be the 27th.
6th, right, Tuesday.
The 6th.
So I'm, I'm betting it's gonna be Thursday, the 1st, because that's their, that's their usual meeting day. So I'm gonna say with 90% certainty, that's likely to be it.
The 1st?
The 1st. Again, that decision's up to the MVU board, we'll know that on the 18th, and we'll know it next Thursday.
1st of...
1st of March.
Check, okay, you gotta clarify.
Uh, well, David.
I knew it.
Yeah?
Good lord.
Yeah, it's a busy, busy job.
Yeah.
9:46.
Okay, we are ready for executive session?
I'll make sure we go into executive session for...
For...
Possible...
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Oh, I know who you are.
Go ahead, wear it right here.
David, I told you.
See you, folks.
So we'll invite in Mr. Goodrich. Fallows in favor of entering executive session at...
9:47?
9:47, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay, we're in the executive session.